From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the county administrative center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning. Board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here. Thank you, and I want to apologize for the late start this morning. I really was warmed, though, when I received a text message from Supervisor Peters, who said he had a drop-off issue this morning and would be a few minutes late. And it was incredible, because I, too, had a drop-off issue this morning. It reminded me that we're mommy and daddy first, Supervisor Peters. And we get grace for that in Kern County, so I appreciate it. You better believe it. Before we begin, I want to introduce our interpreters for today: Reyna Rodriguez and Fernando Lopez, who are available for anyone in the audience requiring translation of the proceedings today from English to Spanish. Ms. Rodriguez, please come to the podium so we can determine if your services are required. Ms. Rodriguez is also available for anyone requiring interpreter to address the board during the meeting.
Muy buenos días a todos. Good morning, everybody. I'm going to give some brief instructions in Spanish. Para todos ustedes que desean de preferencia escuchar esta reunión en español, si tenemos equipo de interpretación en el área de atrás, estaríamos muy felices de apoyarles. Si cuando hagan comentario público, ustedes van a poder dar su comentario completo y nosotros traduciremos enseguida. We are going to be interpreting in simultaneous mode today, and we do have participants. So just for everybody who does speak, make sure you're clear on the mic and slow down just a tad so that we could breathe. If you see me turn blue, that's a sign to slow down. Thank you.
This morning's flag salute will be led by Vincent Martinez. I would ask him to please approach the podium at this time. I have some information to share about you. Vincent Martinez is a proud U.S. Navy veteran, father, and employment specialist whose life has been defined by service. The eldest of six siblings, Vincent comes from a family steeped in military tradition, including his father, brothers, and uncle. He served aboard the USS Valley Forge, a guided missile cruiser capable of high-speed pursuit. He was responsible for topside defense deployment, ship maintenance, and daily navigation, including high-speed chases of narcotics traffickers. God bless you, brother. During his South Pacific deployment, Vincent partnered with Coast Guard boarding -- with the Coast Guard, boarding teams to seize over 50 million in narcotics and apprehend traffickers. After transitioning out of the Navy, Vincent relocated to Bakersfield in 2023 and is an employment specialist with Vocational Rehabilitation Specialist, Inc., where he brings a unique and much-needed perspective to his role, having once stood on the other side of the desk as a participant in the very program he now helps lead. Outside of work, Vincent is a devoted father to an 18-year-old son and a 16-year-old daughter. Together with his partner, they share a deep commitment to service, community, and personal growth. Vincent and his family actively volunteer to ensure the next generation has access to opportunities for enrichment and development. Through their service, they promote the values of sacrifice, family, and community, especially for those most in need. Mr. Martinez is a great American and one of the finest among us. Thank you for leading today's flag salute, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your service, sir. Okay, we are going to transition -- oh, we're going to transition to our Pet of the Week, and our director, Nick Cullen, is bringing out, oh, a rather big baby this morning. Oh, I love this. Who do you have with you, Nick?
Well, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have with me Zira.
Zira!
Who is probably slightly too big for me to behold. She's about 20 pounds.
She doesn't mind.
She's very regal. She is only about a year old, so she's still young. She's available for adoption at the Kern County Animal Shelter right now, and her adoption fees are all waived. It's free to take her home.
Totally free?
Totally free.
Is she vaccinated? Is she spate? Is she?
She's ready to go. She's vaccinated, she's spate.
She's ready to go.
She's also very, very active.
Very active, okay.
I heard you talk.
Well, she's behaving this morning. Well done. Well done. You do better than some of the people that come to Chambers, so nice job. Hint, hint. Okay. We're going to move to our consent agenda at this time. Consent matters are listed on the agenda with a capital C, capital A, and they are considered by staff to be routine and non-controversial. That's why we can handle them all with one motion. If a member of the public feels otherwise, we want to hear from you, and this would be the time to come down and tell us your position on consent matters if you do not see them as routine and non-controversial. Consent matters begin on page two, and they include items two and three, as well as six through eight. On page three, all items listed, nine through 16. On page four, items 17 through 19, and 21 through 25. On page five, items 26 through 30 and 32. On page six, all items listed, 33 through 39. On page seven, all items listed, 40 through 42. Did I miss anything, Kathy? Okay. Marvelous. So regarding the consent agenda, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on consent matters? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to return to my colleagues for comment in action. Thank you, Supervisor Couch. We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Supervisor Flores, thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Under resolutions and proclamations this morning, Supervisor Flores will be presenting a certificate of recognition honoring the Arts Council of Kern County in presenting Latination 12, a festival highlighting the significant contributions of Latin culture in Kern County and beyond. Supervisor Flores, I understand this is your matter.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And so this item does not require a motion. I'll just go down and present the resolution. If the Arts Council will come join me at the podium.
Come on down, Jeanette and crew. So nice to see you. The Arts Council is engaged in an incredibly cutting-edge partnership with our probation department, first of its kind in the state, and I bet just one of the best in the nation. They really are an incredibly creative, thoughtful, and comprehensive organization. It really is nice to honor them. Good to see you, Alva. Appreciate all the hard work you do for the Arts Council. And it looks like we have quite a lively crowd here today. I like it. Welcome.
Thank you.
We have two special treats today. So thank you, Board, members of the public. It's an absolute honor to stand here with the Arts Council of Kern. These are champions of our community, champions for art, champions for expression and culture. And if you look around town, they have truly elevated Kern County and the city of Bakersfield in many areas throughout the county. You see our underpasses with these bright uplifting art projects. They're helping to bake graffiti. They did a great project at Panorama Park, painting electrical structures years ago. So everything they touch, they enlighten, they inspire, they help with budding artists in our community. They're also connected to academics with STEAM, science, technology, education, engineering in arts, is embedded in that academic formula. So there's a special event coming in September, 12 years in the making, celebrating Latination and Latin arts, culture, music, food. It's right here downtown Bakersfield. They're not only revitalizing our spirits artistically, they're literally revitalizing our community, our corridors, bringing them to life, moving from rot to celebration. So thank you. I'm going to bring up Jeanette Richardson, the executive director. She's going to talk more about Latination and what it encompasses, and so the floor is yours. And also, I forgot, while we're here, the proclamation is to the Arts Council of Kern in recognition and commendation of fostering dialogue to the importance of Latin culture, presenting Latination 12, highlighting its significance, artistic contribution to Kern County, dated this day, August 19, 2025, signed by all five members and our chairman, Letitia Perez.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Beautiful presentation, Jeff.
We appreciate that. I love coming here. You guys are always so good to us. So thank you so very much. Wow, Latination. It happened for 11 years. COVID came, it went away. We talked to Don Martin, the originator of Latination, and we asked, can we bring it back? But can we do it bigger and better and make it a free event for everyone in our region? So it is free, two-day festival, doesn't cost you a penny to attend. And that's because of the generosity of this board. Letitia is actually a sponsor, so is Jeff Flores, so thank you so very much. And the purpose of it is to draw us all together, to say, let's celebrate. We need reasons to celebrate, and the arts are a fantastic way to celebrate. So you're going to come out. Mento Buru is going to be playing. I expect dancing. I expect to see you there.
Supervisor Couch is a big Latin dancer.
I almost said, David, I expect to see you dance. It's kind of fun, because I worked with so many of you for so many years. It's fun to see you come out and have a good time. You deserve to have fun, and so does our entire community. And people, artists from all over the western region have submitted their Latin arts. You're going to see a show like we've never seen in Kern County before, because it's bigger and better. And on Saturday, it's a family day, totally family. Oh, I didn't say margaritas were being served on Friday, but on Saturday, no.
I'll get you one, Jess.
So yeah, so there'd be a lot of fun for the adults primarily on Friday night, and the honors for the Latin art. On Saturday, tons of art projects, mural making, creation is going to be happening with recycled arts, and Public Works from the county is having a two-sided booth to do teaching the kids how to create murals. So congratulations to Public Works from the county. So thank you for that as well.
You know, this is really, really exceptional. I have to thank Jeff. What an incredible presentation you made. I don't, I could not have articulated better and so succinctly what you said about what the Arts Council is doing and how they are elevating our spirits and our sense of community with each other through the arts, through dancing, through having a great time together. And, you know, we did not have Latination for a few years. When COVID hit, we shut down Latination. It was launched, of course, and cultivated by the beloved Don Martin, who I know will be joining us in this process, but he kept that going. It was really the best night of the year in Kern County for many years. We had to shut that down, and here we are, back revived again. I understand he'll be joining us. I want to thank him for his heart and the cultivating this Latination here in Kern County through his art studio and now through the Arts Council. This is really exciting. We're going to have a great time, and Jess, I'm going to take care of you there. I promise. We're going to have a good time as a community, very, very quintessential Kern County. So Jeanette, thank you for what you're doing. Alva, thank you. You have such a remarkable team. It's multi-generational, it's totally inclusive, and really, it's a ton of fun, which is the best part. So Jeff, hats off to you. Thank you for bringing this forward, and thank you for your sponsorship, and I'm really excited about this event. We're going to have a good time.
Thank you. We so appreciate it. And now we're going to throw Kathleen Kraus a little bit of a monkey wrench. So I heard through the grapevine of Kern County that our beloved Kathleen Kraus is going to retire. So we, and Jeff is a little bit, you know, in on this. We, we so want you to just say thank you.
Oh, that's beautiful.
And that's your card, and we hope you get to the beach. So here's a shell of flowers. And thank you for all the service. Can I, I can tell you, now that she's retired, she would call me and say, Jeanette, do you have your stuff in? Because I go back with her, we go back, clear back to 2001, when I was running the Arts Council the first time. You have always been such a servant heart. We just want to appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Happy rewirement. I will say it. Happy rewirement. You know, you rewire. You don't ever just, you're not tired all over again. You're just going to go on to some new adventure, a new adventure for Kathleen. A new adventure for Kathleen. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you. Thank you.
Of course, of course. Well done.
Photo moment.
Get over there, Kathy.
Photo moment, sorry.
Such love, how beautiful.
Oh, in the front.
No, no, no.
Get those flowers in the picture.
I'm good.
There you go. Stand down a little bit so we can see you.
You can see me.
Okay, ready? One, two, three.
You got to stand up.
Outstanding.
Thank you all.
That's only a small preview of the fun and love you're going to experience if you come to Latination. Because these people know how to have fun, they know how to love, they know how to include, they know how to do community right. So please join us. We're going to have a lot of fun. This morning, we have two very serious, somber, and important matters that we will be discussing on the regular agenda. One of them involves our Department of Human Services and a story that I know all of you are familiar with. We will be addressing that matter in full and at length later in the agenda. We also have, as you see, our deputies positioned at our staff desk for our truth forum this morning. Both serious matters, and we're going to give them full consideration, and you'll have plenty of opportunity to comment and participate in those matters. But now, we're going to take public presentation and deal with matters that are not on today's agenda. So if you are here for either of those matters, I would ask that you would hold off, please, and wait until we get to them on our actual agenda. You'll have full opportunity to be heard, I promise you. But public presentations is reserved for members of the public who would like to address this board on matters that are not on the agenda today but are within the jurisdiction of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We may deal with them on a future agenda. We may direct you to staff. There are many ways in which we can address the concerns that are within our jurisdiction, but just not on today's agenda. And so now is the time in which we do that. I would ask you to please state and spell your name. I've been leaving that off. I got in trouble with Kathy yesterday. I don't want to be in trouble with her, ever. So please state and spell your name. And I'd ask you to please graciously honor the two minutes that we allot in this time so that we can hear fully from the public but also move to our important agenda items. Welcome and good morning, sir.
Good morning, Board and Staff. Andy Hensel, H-E-N-S-E-L. You'd think we would be speaking to you today about Trump's most recent executive order prohibiting mail-in ballots, but we haven't had time to absorb that. So we'll be speaking about the executive order of July 24th, 2025, entitled, Ending Crime and Disorder on American Streets. And it reads, "By the authority invested in me as President, by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, it is hereby ordered, Section 1, Purpose and Policy, Epidemic Vagrancy, Disorderly Behavior, Sudden Confrontations, and Violent Attacks Have Made Our Cities Unsafe. The number of individuals living on the streets in the United States on a single night during the last year of the previous administration, 274,224, was the highest ever recorded. The overwhelming majority of these individuals are addicted to drugs, true, have mental health conditions, or both. Nearly two-thirds of the homeless individuals report having repeatedly used hard drugs like methamphetamines, cocaine, or opioids in their lifetime. An equally large share of the homeless individuals reported suffering from mental health conditions. The federal government and the states have spent tens of billions of dollars on failed programs that address homelessness but not its root causes, leaving other citizens vulnerable to public safety threats. Shifting homeless individuals into long-term institutional settings for humane treatment through the appropriate use of civil commitment will restore public order. Surrendering our cities and citizens to disorder and fear is neither compassionate to the homeless nor the other citizens. My administration will take a new approach focused on protecting the public safety." And I turn over to Pamela Reese.
Thank you, Andy. Good morning, Pam.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Staff. Could you state and spell your name, please?
Pamela Reese, R-E-E-C-E.
I like the Latination. That sounds great. Where I come from, it's Mexican country. That's how we say it. Following up on Andy's comments on restoring civil commitment, the Attorney General, in consultation with the Secretary of Health and Human Services, shall take appropriate action to seek, in appropriate cases, the reversal of federal or state judicial precedents and the termination of consent decrees that impede the United States' policy of encouraging civil commitment of individuals with mental illness who pose risks to themselves or the public, or are living on the streets and cannot care for themselves in appropriate facilities for appropriate periods of time, meaning those with a grave disability less likely to adequately survive themselves and/or amongst others. And to provide assistance to state and local governments through technical guidance, grants, or other legally available means for the identification, adoption, and implementation of maximally flexible civil commitment, institutional treatment, and step-down treatment standards that allow for the appropriate humane commitment and mindful treatment of individuals with mental illness who pose a danger to others or are living on the streets and cannot care for themselves, not to mention the brokenhearted who suffer the misery of loneliness and loss of dignity because they have lost their way and can no longer function or cope in life. These things I know personally, as my own son suffers from homelessness and a broken heart.
I know, Pam.
To help fight vagrancy on American streets, the Attorney General, the Secretary of Health and Human Services, the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, and the Secretary of Transportation shall take immediate steps to assess their discretionary grant programs and determine whether priority for those grants may be given to the grantees in states and municipalities that actively meet the criteria to the maximum extent permitted by law. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Ladies and gentlemen, Charles Shin, my friend.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. I am Charles Shin, S-H-I-N-N, retired Marine, concerned citizen to the maximum extent permitted by law. One, enforce prohibitions on open illicit drug use. Two, enforce prohibitions on urban camping and loitering. Three, enforce prohibitions on urban squatting. And four, enforce, and where necessary, adopt standards that address individuals who are a danger to themselves and/or others, suffer from serious mental illness or substances use disorder, and/or are living on the streets and cannot care for themselves through assisted outpatient treatment or by moving them into treatment centers or other appropriate facilities via civil commitment or other available means to the maximum extent permitted by law. Or, five, substantially implement and comply with, to the extent required, the registration and notification obligations of the Sex Offender Registry and Notifications Act, particularly in the case of registered sex offenders with no fixed addresses, including inadequate mapping and checking the location of homeless sex offenders. B, the Attorney General shall, one, ensure that homeless individuals arrested for federal crimes are evaluated consistent with 18 U.S.C. 4248 to determine whether they are sexually dangerous persons and certify accordingly for civil commitment. Two, take all necessary steps to ensure the available funds under the Emergency Federal Enforcement Assistance Program to support, as consistent with 34 U.S.C. 50101, encampment removal efforts in the areas for which public safety is at risk, and state and local resources are inadequate. I'll be followed by my good friend, Ron Barger.
Good morning, Board, Madam Chair. Ron Barger, B-A-R-G-E-R.
Thank you, sir.
Continuing, number three. Assess federal resources to determine whether they may be directed toward ensuring, to the extent permitted by law, that detainees with serious mental illness are not released into the public because of lack of forensic bed capacity at appropriate local, state, and federal jails and hospitals. Four, enhance requirements that prisons and residential reentry centers that are under the authority of the Attorney General or receiving funding from the Attorney General require in custody housing release plans and, to the maximum extent practicable, require individuals to comply. Section four, redirecting federal resources toward effective methods of addressing homelessness. A, the Secretary of Health and Human Services shall take appropriate action to, one, ensure that discretionary grants issued by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration for substance use disorder prevention, treatment, and recovery fund evidence-based programs and do not fund programs that fail to achieve adequate outcomes, including so-called harm reduction or safe consumption efforts that only facilitate illegal drug use and its intended harm. Two, provide technical assistance to assisted outpatient treatment programs for individuals with serious mental illness or addictions during and after the civil commitment process, focused on shifting such individuals off of the streets and public programs and into private housing and support networks. Turn this over to Mr. Ralph Robles.
That's sort of rare appearance by Mr. Robles. Welcome, good morning. Good to see you, sir.
Good morning. Ralph Robles, R-O-B-L-E-S.
Thank you, sir.
I am a veteran. And, three, ensure that federal funds for federally qualified health centers and certified community behavioral health clinics reduce rather than promote homelessness by supporting the maximum extent permitted by law comprehensive service for individuals with serious mental illnesses and substance use disorder, including crisis intervention services. B, the Attorney General shall prioritize available funding to support the expansion of drug courts and mental health courts for individuals for which such diversion services serve public safety. Section five, increasing accountability and safety in America's homelessness programs. A, the Secretary of Health and Human Services and the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development shall take appropriate actions to increase accountability in their provision of and grants awarded for homelessness, excuse me, assistance and transitional living programs. These actions shall include, to the extent permitted by law, ending support for housing-first policies that de-prioritize accountability and fail to promote treatment recovery and self-sufficiency, increasing competition among grantees through broadening the applicant pool and holding grantees to higher standards of effectiveness in reducing homelessness and increasing public safety. B, the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development shall, as appropriate, take steps to require recipients of federal housing and homelessness assistance to increase requirements that persons participating in the recipients' programs who suffer from substance use disorder or serious mental illnesses, substance abuse treatment, or mental health services as a condition of participation. I will be followed by Ms. Mary Little. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mary.
Good morning, Board, and good morning, Chair. Nice to see you all this morning. It's not a matter, my name is Mary Little, M-A-R-Y-L-I-T-T-L-E. Thank you. It's not a matter of allocating more money. It's a matter of using our resources that we have. With respect to federal and federal housing and homelessness assistance that operate drug induction sites or safe consumption sites normally distribute drug paraphernalia or permit the use of distribution of illicit drugs on property under the control. The Attorney General shall review whether such recipients are in violation of federal law and bring civil or criminal actions in appropriate cases. And the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, in coordination with the Attorney General, shall review whether such recipients are in violation of the terms of the programs in pursuit to which they receive federal housing and homelessness assistance and freeze their assistance as appropriate. The Secretary of Housing and Urban Development shall take appropriate measures and revise regulations as necessary to allow where permissible, under applicable law, federally funded programs to exclusively house women and children and to stop sex offenders who receive homelessness assistance through such programs from being housed with unrelated children. The Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, in consultation with Attorney General and Secretary of Health and Human Services, shall, as appropriate, to the extent permitted by law, allow or require the recipients of federal funding for homelessness assistance to collect health-related information that the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development identifies as necessary to the effective and efficient operation of funding program for all persons to whom assistance is provided. Next will be Jess Sanders. Thank you for your time.
Morning, Jess.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, council. Requiring those funding recipients to share such data with the, it goes better with glasses, with the law enforcement authorities in circumstances permitted by law and to use the collected health data to provide appropriate medical care for individuals with mental health diagnosis or connected individuals with public resources. Section six, general provisions. Nothing in this order shall be construed to impair or otherwise affect the authority granted by law to an executive department or agency or head thereof, the functions of the Director of the Office of Management and Budget relating to budgetary administrative or legislative proposals. This order shall be implemented consistent with the applicable law and subject to the availability of appropriations. This order is not intended to and does not create any right or benefit substantive or procedural enforceable by law or inequity by any party against the United States, its department, agencies, or entities, its officers, employees, agencies, or other personnel. The cost of this publication, of this order shall be borne by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, signed by Donald J. Trump, White House J., July 24, 2025. I think following this will actually reduce our crime, increase our safety, help our public get off of drugs, and maybe get them on the right foot for productive activity. It'll also produce a way of spending our money without just throwing it away. Thank you, ma'am.
Jess, could you spell your last name for me?
S-A-N-D-E-R-S.
S-A-N-D-E-R-S. Thank you, sir. Good morning, Janine, and welcome. I like your hat.
Welcome from the Tehachapi Mountain Festival that was last weekend. Janine Adams. Thank you, gentlemen, as usual. Very detailed. I am only one person. I only have two minutes. They got 14. Good job. Okay. I just, again, today's going to be about transparency, so I can talk more about transparency a little later on. But Stan Ellis, newly elected to AD 32 in the legislature, you know, California, just sent out to the people that he's got his email. I mean, I think you guys can just sent out to the people—that he's got his email. I mean, I think you guys can get my email. I've probably given it to you, okay? If not, I'll give you my card, okay? But this is—he sent out a proposal by the state of California—remember the trickle-down effect that you guys have talked about, okay? He wants input with regard to the maps that have been proposed by the current administration, 47, and his Republican administration at the federal level. And there's time to—for us, the public—that's you guys—the public to make comment. How wonderful that Mr. Ellis has sent this out. Share your comments with his office, he says. What about if our us—we share our comments with your office? Because there are going to be things that come here with regard to changing maps and what's going on, and of course, anything that has to do with changing voting maps. In the Constitution, voting has to do with—you guessed it—the state of California. And the state is doing what they are doing because the feds are doing what they are doing. It's tit-for-tat, and I'm tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Any other members of the public want to weigh in on matters not on today's agenda? We will get to our agenda items momentarily. Good morning. Welcome.
Ms. Lisa, M-S dot L-I-S-A, middle initial K, last name Pollard. I wasn't going to come up, but they were talking about the homeless people. And I was a former invited guest to be on the board to end chronic homelessness. I think they had a 10-year goal. Anyway, at that time, I read the grant. It was for—to pick up the person right where they are, put them in a hotel, get them into permanent housing. It didn't matter if they were addicted to drugs or alcohol, or if they destroyed wherever they were staying. At that time, it was costing $30,000 a year to go in and out of the emergency because we know they're out on the street, and so that gets them sick and ill, and they go in and they go out. And so I just wanted to share that about me and my experience and learning about what I learned as a guest board member to end chronic homelessness.
Thank you for your service. Could you spell your last name, Ms. Pollard?
P-O-L-L-A-R-D.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your input, and thank you for your service. Are there any other members of the public who would like to weigh in on matters not on today's agenda? Okay.
Hi, Dave.
Oh, gotcha. My apologies.
Thank you all for your service.
Welcome. Good morning, and if you could state and spell your name, please.
My name's Alejandro Rocha, A-L-E-J-A-N-D-R-O-R-O-C-H-A. Thank you, everybody, for your service here today.
Welcome.
I am here for—just to speak about the Genesis Mata case.
Okay, that case—that matter's coming up a little bit later, and you'll have opportunity to come down and talk about it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So if you—I'm so sorry to do that to you, but if you just want to have a seat, we're going to—we'll call you back up in a few moments when we get to that agenda item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, sir. Okay, seeing no other members of the public coming down, we're going to move to board member announcements or reports. Gentlemen, anything? Looks like Supervisor Parlier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So last week, I had a great opportunity to visit with the community of Caliente and Twin Oaks and the surrounding communities. We had a great meeting, and I want to thank county staff that were out there, the Sheriff's Department, Animal Services, the Fire Department, Public Works, Code Enforcement. Everyone just did a wonderful job, and I think the community was extremely happy that everyone was there. They said the last person that came out there was Steve Perez, so that was almost 20 years ago. And anyway, we had a great time, and I think we're going to accomplish a lot of stuff in that community, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Seeing no other interest in board member announcements report, I do have actually two matters. First of all, I want to embarrass Alva Martinez by saying happy birthday to you today. I won't say your age. I don't know it, but it's not my business. But happy birthday to you. Also, I want to take a moment to introduce—you heard earlier, the, you know, the sad and ultimately inevitable change—changing of the guard that we know occurs with some regularity. Our clerk will be retiring, and we will be honoring her at our next board session. But to replace her is Ms. Julie Gregg. She has been in training here for some time, very—spending a lot of time with Kathy and the other clerks, learning the ropes and doing a fine job. As I can see, I told her this morning she had big shoes to fill, and she acknowledged that is very true, but she is more than capable, I can tell. So I want to introduce Julie Gregg as the new Chief Clerk of the Board, following the retirement of Kathy Kraus, coming soon on August 29th. Julie joins the county from Taff Union High School District, where she worked as the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent for 12 years, providing administrative support to the Superintendent, the Executive Cabinet, and the Board of Trustees, ensuring effective communication between the district offices, external agencies, and the public. We are pleased to welcome Julie to the county as she brings her extensive experience in government relations and project management to this new role. Julie, would you like to say a few words? You don't have to. Okay, got it. Well, welcome. You'll be doing plenty of communicating and bossing us around here in the near future. As I always acknowledge, the true boss—or my true boss was always Kathy Kraus. So moving along, past board member announcements or report, we're going to move to the matters of the agenda that I think most of you are here to weigh in on and to participate in. Item number 20 is our opportunity to conduct annually our Truth Act Community Forum in accordance with Government Code Section 7283.1D regarding local law enforcement agencies' interaction with the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement in 2024. We conduct these hearings here as a matter to discuss items or activities that occurred in the previous year. That's why 2024 is listed in the agenda. I understand Chief Deputy Joel Swanson is here, and he will be providing information to us regarding the Truth Forum. And again, if I would ask the public again, as you begin to weigh in on these matters, to please state and spell your name. The—we're going to start with Kendra Graham, our new county council, and then we'll be moving over to our Sheriff's Department, and I understand our probation department, as well as members of the public. Kendra, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Perez and members of the Board of Supervisors. We are here this morning so that we can conduct the Truth Act Community Forum. Chief Deputy County Counsel Katie Rivera from our office will introduce this item, and then she will turn it over to the Sheriff's Office, or first the probation department and then the Sheriff's Office for a presentation.
Good morning, Chair Perez and members of the Board. This item is being brought before your Board this morning so a community forum may occur. Specifically, the California Transparent Review of Unjust Transfers and Hold Act, also known as the Truth Act, and contained in the California Government Code, mandates that the governing body of any county in which a local law enforcement agency has provided Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, access to an individual during the last year, conduct at least one community forum during the following year. Your Board is such a governing body. Government Code Section 7283.1 states the purpose of the forum is to provide information to the public about ICE's access to individuals and to receive and consider public comment. Your Board's meeting today is the place and time selected for the community forum to provide information about the year 2024 to the public and to receive and consider public comment. The required notice of today's forum has been provided. Specifically, the notice of hearing was posted on the county's website on July 18th, 2025. This posting was timely and satisfies the 30-day notice requirements of Government Code Section 7283 Subsection A. As Chair Perez mentioned, Fernando Lopez and Reyna Rodriguez are present today to provide Spanish interpretation to members of the public who need it. Kern County Probation Division Director Frank Herrera is present and has a brief statement. Following probation statement, Chief Deputy Joel Swanson of the Kern County Sheriff's Office will make a presentation accompanied by a PowerPoint, which will provide information about ICE's access to individuals during 2024. After Chief Deputy Swanson concludes, Myra Joaquin with the ACLU has asked to make a statement accompanied by a PowerPoint. Following Ms. Joaquin, it would be appropriate to hear public comment. It is therefore recommended that your Board conduct the forum, including receiving and considering public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Welcome. Please state and spell your name.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I am Frank Herrera, Probation Division Director. Frank, common spelling. Last name Herrera, H-E-R-R-E-R-A.
Thank you, sir.
I have a few brief comments for the Board. During the past year, the probation department has received zero hold requests and zero requests to interview any youth that are in custody in the probation department's three custody facilities. Additionally, probation has to report. We received one request for information for an individual allegedly on probation, and according to law, the probation department provided no information. This concludes our brief remarks. I'm here to answer any questions, if the Board has any.
We may call you back up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board.
Thank you.
All right.
Morning, and welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Perez and members of the Board. Thank you for inviting us to speak with you today. As you are aware, California Government Code 7283.1 calls for a forum to provide information to the public about ICE's access to individuals and receive and consider public comment. To that end, I would like to take a few moments to provide some data and information regarding ICE access to incarcerated persons during 2024. It is important to note that I will only be discussing matters related to the Kern County Sheriff's Office operations, as the sheriff does not direct or have authority over operations of federal, state, or other local law enforcement agencies or detention facilities. Before I get into specifics, I would like to reiterate some points that have been mentioned in past forums regarding what the Sheriff's Office does and does not do in relation to immigration enforcement. First, the Sheriff's Office does not hold incarcerated persons past their date of release nor delay their release. The Sheriff's Office does not ask about individuals' immigration status or provide ICE with access to our databases. We are not involved in the enforcement of immigration law, deportations, or immigration sweeps. That being said, the Sheriff's Office does cooperate with ICE as allowed by law. This includes making release notifications to ICE regarding eligible incarcerated persons only when requested and only when they have qualifying convictions. As part of this process, we notify the incarcerated person when ICE has requested notification of their release. We also notify the incarcerated person of their rights regarding their release notification and interview request. I'll be discussing these processes and notifications in a bit more detail later in the presentation. Before I discuss some of the processes related to SB 54 and the Truth Act, I'd like to briefly mention the Trust Act. This 2014 legislation prohibited agencies from holding incarcerated persons for ICE once their local charges were resolved unless certain charges applied. At that time, the Sheriff's Office ended the practice of holding incarcerated persons for ICE past their release dates regardless of the charges. This remains the case today. Releases are not delayed for ICE. Now I'd like to move on and talk about some of our processes that relate to the Truth Act, AB 2792, and the California Values Act, SB 54. These processes are outlined in Sheriff's Office Detention Bureau Policy C 2300. First, I'd like to talk about the requirements for release notifications and transfers to ICE from the jails, which are outlined by the Values Act, SB 54. After that, I'll discuss requests by ICE to interview incarcerated persons, which are covered under the Truth Act. In terms of notification release requests, the process starts when an ICE agent fills out a request form for a specific incarcerated person. Our clerical supervisors review the incarcerated person's criminal history to determine if he or she meets the criteria laid out by SB 54, which is mostly based on prior convictions, but it can be based on current charges. If it is determined the incarcerated person is eligible, the file is flagged for notification upon release. If not, the form is archived. An incarcerated person for whom notification is authorized is notified using a form, which we have available in various languages. The form also gives the incarcerated person an opportunity to let us know who they wish to contact when we notify ICE, which complies with the Truth Act. The incarcerated person is provided a copy of the completed form. When an incarcerated person is due to be released and meets the criteria outlined in SB 54 for notification to be made, that notification is made at the start of the release process. The time required to complete a release can very significantly depend on the jail's operations and the volume of releases being processed during that time. However, the release is not intentionally delayed. If ICE is present once the incarcerated person is released, they can take custody of the incarcerated person. If not, the incarcerated person is released without delay. In 2024, a total of 28,361 individuals were booked in the Kern County Sheriff's Office jails. During this time, ICE submitted 19 requests for notification of release. It should be noted that one of these 19 requests was a duplicate. Overall, ICE notification requests accounted for approximately 0.07% of all bookings, with a 0.05% increase from 2023. A duplicate notification request was generated due to ICE initially submitting a request for an incarcerated individual who did not meet the criteria outlined in SB 54 at the time of submission. Subsequently, ICE submitted a second request for the same individual, thereby resulting in a duplicate notification. Of the notification requests received, two resulted in transfers to ICE from the Kern County Sheriff's Office jails. Although both transfers occurred in 2024, one of the notification requests was submitted in 2023 and was therefore included in the prior year's reporting. This chart provides an illustration of this data, comparing 2023, shown by the light gray bars, with 2024 in red. As you can see, the number of notification requests significantly increased, and the number of transfers went up by one. This second chart is another way to look at the same data. In 2023, on the left, about 0.2% of incarcerated persons for whom notifications were requested ended up being transferred to ICE. On the right, in 2024, about 0.1% were transferred to ICE for whom notifications were requested. And—
Do you have some sense of why the requests went up from 5 to 19? Do you have a sense about why that was?
I don't. We pulled up the data, and it was throughout the entire year. It wasn't specific just to the end of the year, say from November and December. It was throughout. We had multiple requests, starting from January all the way through.
Thank you.
This chart illustrates the percentage of incarcerated individuals booked into the Kern County Sheriff's Office jails who were transferred to ICE. In 2023, on the left side, approximately 0.02% were transferred, and similarly—in 2024, right side, approximately 0.02% were also transferred to ICE. Before we move on to discuss interview requests, I'd like to provide you some basic demographic information we put together. As you can see from this slide, 17 individuals were Hispanic and one was Asian. 17 were male and one female, with the average age being 41 years old. The median amount of time spent in our custody in 2024 was about 67 days. One of the notification requests received was a duplicate for the same individual. Additionally, one individual was originally reported in 2017 and remained in custody through 2024, totaling 3,125 days in custody. Another individual was reported in 2021 and remained in custody through 2024, totaling 1,081 days.
Meaning that person was not transferred because they remain in custody?
Correct.
Okay.
When KCSO reports to DOJ, it appears that we transfer more incarcerated persons than what we report during our annual forum, because DOJ requests us to report by qualifying charge and not by individual. This means that some individuals may have multiple qualifying charges. However, this year, the numbers match, since we only had two transfers, and each one only had one qualifying conviction. Per DOJ instructions, we must indicate the number of transfers to immigration authorities by the offense code that allowed for the transfer. This is a summary count by offense and not by individual records. The rules surrounding interview requests by ICE are governed by the Truth Act. When ICE wants to interview an incarcerated person, the incarcerated person is notified by way of a form, which explains the reason for the interview. by way of a form, which explains the reason for the interview and that it is voluntary. This form is available in various languages. The form gives incarcerated persons three choices: to decline to be interviewed, to agree to be interviewed with their attorney present, or to agree to be interviewed without their attorney. Regardless of their choice, the incarcerated person signs the form and is given a copy. The original form remains on file. If the incarcerated person refuses to sign, that is taken as a refusal to be interviewed.
Do you have much of that? Refusal to be interviewed, refusal to sign? Is that common?
So, on this one, we had zero interview requests, so I can't answer that for this year or for 2024. We didn't have any to base that off of.
Thank you.
So, and again, yeah, we indicate that ICE did not have any request to interview incarcerated persons in 2024.
Thank you.
The following slides explain qualifying convictions and provides examples of those charges. Incarcerated persons convicted of a serious felony or have been convicted of a felony that was punishable by prison must fall within 15 years and within the last five years for a misdemeanor conviction. Also, those who must register as a sex offender qualify. Incarcerated persons who were recently arrested for a qualifying charge but have not been convicted are eligible if they are taken before a magistrate and probable cause for the charge is determined. These are a few convictions that qualify under Government Code 7282.5. And you can also find the list on the California legislative website under 7282.5.
So are these convictions identified in SB 54 as separate from or subject to ICE notification, ICE interviews, if you will?
These are all charges that are included, that ICE can put a notification for request for release on or an interview request on.
Okay.
So they're all very, almost all serious felonies that are involved. As we've mentioned before, KCSO does not place any hold for immigration authorities. Incarcerated persons who have a release notification form are released without delay if the ICE agent is not present. If the ICE agent is present, they can arrest once the incarcerated person's release is KCSO policy strictly prohibits any kind of hold for immigration authorities or agents and does not permit any staff member to accept a hold request. Before I close, I'd like to make some clarifications about some items that were mentioned in the past forums. First, the Kern County Sheriff's Office is not involved in arrests that ICE make in the community. Whatever activities ICE may initiate locally are done so without our involvement. Secondly, ICE does not have access to any Kern County Sheriff's Office databases, and we do not provide them offices within the jail. The sheriff's office only operates facilities within the Laredo Jail complex and a small jail at the Mojave substation. The county of Kern and the Kern County Sheriff's Office have no affiliation with privately-run custody facilities, such as the Mesa Verde ICE Processing Center or the recently proposed immigration facility in Cal City. I would also like to extend our thanks to ACLU for their cooperation with the Kern County Sheriff's Office staff to discuss these matters. Their collaboration has proven helpful in refining Kern County Sheriff's Office procedures. The sheriff's office continues to review its operations and policies related to the TRUTH Act and SB 54 to ensure any involvement with federal immigration authorities is carried out within the relevant law. With that said, I would like to thank the board for inviting us to speak on this matter, and this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation, and thank you for your acknowledgement of the assistance by ACLU. I think relations have improved dramatically from 2014, when I was chair also that year at the implementation of SB 54. So thank you for that. I understand the ACLU is present. I don't want to butcher your name because I don't entirely know how to pronounce it, so if you could come down and pronounce it, that would be so helpful, and spell it for the record if you don't mind. Welcome. We're happy to see you.
Thank you. Good morning, Board Member Perez. My name is Myra Joachin.
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 J-O-A-C-H-I-N. Good morning, members of the board.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us and allowing us to present on this, the numbers of the TRUTH Act forum, and I do want to acknowledge that we did speak with Deputy Chief Swanson in advance. I would like to start first by just referencing the values that are underlying the TRUTH Act, TRUST Act, and SB 54, which is at the core of these statutes. It's the interest in developing a relationship of trust between California immigrant communities and state and local agencies, and how central that is to public safety within our communities, within our boundaries, and within the state of California. Trust is threatened, as California has recognized, whenever state and local agencies are entangled in any way with federal immigration enforcement, as that is a detriment to public safety and to the well-being of all Californians. With that in mind, these various statutes do address the lack of transparency and accountability that there has been in the past by ensuring that all immigration deportation programs that depend or in some ways use any entanglement with local law enforcement are subject to meaningful public oversight, which is why we're here and why, I believe, we'll be back next year as well to continue to talk about the kind of collaboration that is happening and any requests by immigration agents for collaboration from Kern County Sheriff's Office and from use of public resources. Since we were here last year, we have been in communication with Kern County Sheriff's Office about their policy addressing the TRUTH Act and TRUST Act, Policy C 2300, and there were two important changes that were implemented in response to recommendations made by our organization. Those two changes include revisions to the language on qualifying conviction. The policy before used qualifying charge when the actual language of the TRUTH Act is, it requires for there to be a conviction and not a charge, which is really important because it ensures that someone's case has actually received due process, been heard in court, and that it's not merely a charge, but rather they've made their way to the final resolution. And so Kern County Sheriff's Office did update the policy to reflect the language that's included within the TRUTH Act, so that now the policy reads that any transfers which are permissible will only be based on qualifying convictions, not a charge.
Understood.
And second, they've also revised language to clarify that the sheriff's office will not be using probable cause to detain an individual for the purpose of an immigration detainer or for immigration custody. This was an issue that we've been raising before this board for a couple of years now that we've been in communication with Kern County Sheriff's Office about this issue and the challenges that the previous language included, which is it could have misled individuals to believe that the sheriff's office was going to be using resources to detain people for immigration purposes when that is not necessarily within their purview, and so that language has been revised to remove that, to clarify. I, Deputy Chief Swanson, spent a good amount of time addressing 2024 data, and so I will be brief, but I do want to note that our office had submitted a Public Records Act request soliciting data about any collaboration with immigration regarding transfers, notifications of release, or interview requests, and we had not received that data until this morning. And so I do have an answer regarding interview requests for this year, which I've also been in contact, well, I reached out to Chief Deputy Swanson about, right before this forum. So I can speak to that briefly, but in terms of the data for this year, there were 18 notifications of release that were received. We do not have a basis for why there were 18 compared to the fewer number from last year. That information is not provided to us. If there were any information that were available to Kern County Sheriff's Office that could help us understand why there's increases in notification release or how those releases are coming in, then that would be useful to everyone in our community, but like their office, we currently do not have any information to explain the increase. And again, there were only two transfers that were reported to the California Department of Justice and two transfers that we understand were made in 2024 that were transferred based on Penal Code 245(c) and Penal Code 236. I do want to underscore that even these transfers themselves are discretionary. Government code indicates that the sheriff's office may transfer only when there's a qualifying conviction, but it doesn't necessarily require the transfer, given the impact that any collaboration with immigration is having on our communities and the deep fear that has been felt this year in Kern County since January 6th. I do think it's important that, to the extent that we can, the sheriff's office and everyone within this community work to avoid any kind of collaboration with immigration enforcement, even in places where it's permitted, because it is not required, and we do believe firmly that immigration enforcement should be kept separate from any processes within our criminal justice system.
May I ask a question about that?
Please, Supervisor Couch.
What were the, can you go back to that slide? I'm unfamiliar with the code, so could you tell me what 245 and 236 are?
245(c) is assault with a deadly weapon, and then Penal Code 236 is for false imprisonment. Those were the qualifying convictions. I don't have any more details about the arrests themselves or the charges underlying those convictions.
Sorry, so I understand in those cases, false imprisonment and assault with a deadly weapon, you're suggesting that the sheriff's department not cooperate with ICE even in those situations?
I think it goes to what form of system you believe in, Supervisor Couch, because if we believe in the criminal justice system and that that's meant to serve any crime or any conviction that someone has been charged with, then those individuals presumably have already complied and served their sentence, and so if we believe that the criminal justice system is meant to provide some kind of justice to the victims' families or to anyone else, then those individuals have served their time. And what I ask to you-
I'm not suggesting they haven't. I'm simply asking, your suggestion is that the sheriff's department should not cooperate with ICE even in those situations because the law says "may." Is that correct?
My suggestion is that the two systems be kept separate, because violation, any presence in the U.S. in violation of immigration law is a civil offense. It is not a criminal offense, and they are not required to transfer individuals.
So is that a yes?
Yes, that they be kept separate.
Thank you.
I do want to speak briefly to the, some of the information that we've received this year, and that's only with respect to interview requests, because we do not have data on transfers or notifications for release, but this year, there have been an astounding number of interview requests. Chief Deputy Swanson noted that there weren't any last year. This year through July, there have been 140 interview requests that have been processed, and about 26 individuals have agreed to proceed with those interviews. There are specific provisions within Policy C 2300 that specify what Kern County Sheriff's Office should be doing when those interview requests come in, and given the alarming number that have come in this year and what we are seeing within our communities with the rather aggressive and increased immigration enforcement, we are looking forward to continue to discuss any data about these numbers this year and in preparation for the next forum, and we ask that the Kern County Sheriff's Office continue to ensure compliance with its policy and to follow every procedure that's included in the policy about what happens when there is an interview request, and specifically what happens whenever those individuals are being informed that it's voluntary and not required, especially if those individuals do not have an attorney representing them. Lastly, I just want to speak briefly to the composition of our Kern County, where about 20% of our residents are foreign-born, and 43% of the children here who are aged 0 to 17 live with at least one immigrant parent, and more than half of Kern residents are Hispanic. We have seen the impact that any form of immigration enforcement in this community has had. On our, on Kern County residents, we saw that earlier this year, when there were about 78 people who were arrested by immigration agents, and nearly hundreds of individuals were stopped by immigration who were targeting people because of their occupation, because of their race, and going to places where farm workers were present. We, I think we all understand how significant our farm worker community is for everyone here, for the state of California, for this country, really, and I, we ask that we continue to ensure that there is effective policing here in Kern County by preventing any kind of collaboration, even instances that are permissible, so that people can feel safe when contacting the sheriff's office, so that they feel that they are treated equally based on our laws, and so that they're free from any discrimination and fear. And lastly, when immigrant communities fear the police, they are less likely to report crimes. I think we all want to ensure that people feel comfortable calling law enforcement if there has been any crime to report, and here within this county, we want to also ensure that our resources are spent in a way that's effective and useful. Any hours spent assisting immigration is a misuse, in our opinion, of our time and resources that could be shifted into other local priorities to help our Kern County residents. So finally, we ask that you ensure that there is adequate funding for Kern County offices, including public defenders, so that everyone here has access to representation and justice, that you help us fund an immigration legal defense fund to support residents, and that you also help us respond to any harmful immigration policies that could separate our communities and create fear within Kern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joachin, for what you do and your passion and concern for all members of this community is noted and much appreciated. Thank you. And for your partnership with our sheriff's department. It's improved dramatically over the years, and that's only good for all of us. I appreciate you very much. I don't see colleagues punching at this time, but we're going to open the public hearing portion of this TRUTH Act forum and ask you to please come forward, state and spell your name for the record, and give us your input, please. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Jess Sanders, S-A-N-D-E-R-S. I noticed they use the word immigrant up there, and I think they're confusing the two, immigrant and illegal alien. They shouldn't be confused. Immigrants are here legally. Now, if I get pulled over, my license is run through about, I don't know, 10 different agencies to find out if I'm wanted for, I don't know, murder, speeding, a traffic ticket, maybe child support. It collaborates all of those areas of law enforcement to find out that they want me. They notify each other. I don't think I should be left out of that circle. It should be, we're after a criminal. We should collaborate with law enforcement to get the criminal, whether it's ICE or not. There is not any form that I can go down and say, hey, will you sign this, Ms. Perez, and let me not, I need a waiver from these, whatever it is, child support, excessive speeding, DUI, whatever. They can't check my records. I need your signature on that to say, no, they can't check these records, because I don't want to be caught for it. That's what you're doing with holding ICE out of this. You're giving exceptions to certain portions of the law for people that broke the law to get here, whereas a citizen has no option for that. I can't go down and say, I don't want this gentleman here to arrest me because I have a felony warrant. I have a DUI. I'm driving drunk. I can't give him a piece of paper to say, will you not arrest me because of this? Because of this? And have your board sign it? And I'm not sure why illegal aliens can get away with that type of thing. They have a law saying, I don't have to obey the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Welcome again. Good morning. Your name for the record, sir?
Good morning, Supervisor. Madam Chair, Charles Shin, S-H-I-N-N. We're running- We're running a country here. We're not running a United Nations or Ollie Ollie End Free deal. We have rules and regulations. Normally, the polite society has gotten away with folks just doing their normal daily tasks and following the rules and regulations because they were self-governed people. We have lost sight of self-governed people. Conservatives in general, I'm not speaking for all of them, we want the government to leave us alone. We don't want oppressive government. We don't want oppressive city government, county government. But what we have now is anarchy. And I think we have a president that wants to bring an end to anarchy. There's a method for folks who want to come to America and work. It's called getting a work permit. Come through the front door, be documented, and then you get to work in America. Follow the rules and regulations. When you come to go to school, you attend school. You don't come to school and then show up and only protest. I hope we're all waking up to what is going on and what we're trying to, we, I mean, the polite society, what we're trying to get back to, which is a normal country with rules and regulations, and it's not just the government is Santa Claus and handing stuff out because we have citizens that are going without, they're going without health care because folks are getting health care that shouldn't be on, shouldn't be in the system to begin with. And we also have veterans that need support. And we have people just draining the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shin. Good morning. Welcome. Please state and spell your name.
Janine. Last name Adams, A-D-A-M-S. I am a voter. I am an advocate. I am a woman in Mr. Parlier's district. Thank you, Mr. Parlier, for allowing me to speak with you after these meetings and with your staff. I do appreciate that. I probably will go up and talk to his staff after this meeting. But I would like to agree with these gentlemen over here called concerned citizens because I am a concerned citizen as well. Now, we may not agree on 100%, but maybe we agree on 80%? And so we just give each other grace because we respect each other for the other 20%? And that's how we get along in America, okay? United States of America, we have to learn to get along with each other-
Yes, we do.
-no matter what the color or immigration status of anyone is, because quite frankly, I've told you before, I am an immigrant. My Irish, you know, they weren't like back then when they immigrated? 1855, my Irish side of the family immigrated here. They were Catholic and they were hated. They were white and they were hated. Ridiculous, the whole thing is ridiculous. But more specifically to what's going on right now in California City. There is a prison there, as you are all aware, especially Mr. Parlier is aware, in Cal City that used to be run by Geo Group. It's a private prison that I hope is still empty because the current administration, 47, and his current administration is trying to pay a private contractor, Core something or other, to open that as an ICE facility. It will be one of the largest 2,500 seats. This has not been opened since COVID for obvious reasons. You all know about those, okay? But there are rules and regulations from the very lowest part of government, and I'm talking about the city level in the city of California City, and I know because I worked at the assessor's office, it is the largest geographic city in California. Crazy, right? Okay. Anyway, this prison is inside the city limits, and for that reason, it must comply with their laws. But guess what? The county probably has some laws that have to do about prisons as well. I don't know, maybe Mr. Parlier's office can figure that out, okay? But I will tell you that there are laws that are California laws that apply. They cannot just randomly reopen a prison that's closed without public input, right? So what I'm asking this board, and especially my supervisor, Parlier, is to figure out why this corporation is being allowed to circumvent laws just because, I don't know why. I really don't know why. I assume it has something to do with money. What do they say? Money is the root of all evil? Maybe we should ask the people that live in Cal City, or live in Tehachapi, or live in District 2, if they would like to have a prison opened that may or may not be housing only people, the only violation they have is possibly that they came into the country illegally. Otherwise, they've been, you know, working, doing what they're supposed to do, paying their taxes, but we want to put them in prison? That, my friend, is crazy, and it starts at the very top of this government. But you, unfortunately, are the ones that have to implement what happens at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Please come forward and state your name and spell, please, also, for the record. Good morning and welcome.
Buenos dias. My name is Gonzalo Santos, S-A-N-T-O-S. I'm here to address this board. Last time was when the debate over the Trust Act, and then subsequently, the first hearings that we had, the first public hearings, I came here too. I'm so glad to be here and hear the report from the Sheriff's Office, which is in full compliance with the Trust Act. I think people like myself and the ACLU and so many activists, some of whom were my students at Cal State and are here today, have been vindicated that we do have cordial relations with the Sheriff's Department, which has a reputation of being very hard, with the ACLU, which has a reputation of being very liberal, very supportive of immigrant rights. That is so good to see. I would like to make two points, if I may, apart from the fact that I represent that 20% of your county that is foreign-born, that my children are part of that 43% that have an immigrant parent, that I'm also part of that over half of Latino citizens of this county. So I have, I have earned the right to speak here, and even if I didn't, I would still come and speak. Two points. What a contrast, folks. We went into the minutia, whether it's one or whether it's two, when in Florida, it's thousands, eagerly pursued by the sheriffs of Florida with gusto, with real cruelty, breaking their windows, dragging them away from their children, out of their schools, from the fields. What a contrast, that when the MIGRA showed up this February, or was it January?
January.
January. When the MIGRA showed up in January as a pilot project, even still having Biden as president, they couldn't wait for Trump, and they came here on purpose, all the way from Florida, to raid our farmworking communities that the Sheriff's Office did not participate. What a contrast. I'm here to pay my respects to that. I'm a very radical type of person when it comes to immigration reform, and I didn't think I would ever have to tell you, thank you, for not participating in those raids, for not collaborating with ICE, for understanding who your community is, for understanding the lie that undocumented people are criminals, the lie that leads to this gigantic operation of mass deportation of innocent, innocent people whose crime is to work hard for this country, for their families and their futures. And you did not participate in that lie. And so that was the first point I wanted to make. The reason that our Sheriff's Office and other Sheriff's Offices around the state of California have behaved more or less is because we passed the Trust Act against the wishes of this board, against some of you that were back then voting to oppose it. So I expect an apology from you or a retraction of your vote anytime soon. The second point, and last, and I ask for indulgence here, is to put it in context. We are in a state of open war against Latinos and immigrant communities in the United States. There is a confusion going on as to when does the onslaught of assaults on immigrant families end, and when does the onslaught of assaults on Latino-American families begin? I'm not confused. I taught for 30 years the Historical Sociology of Immigration. I know how slippery the road is and how the Irish and the Italians and the Jews and the Polish and everybody else had to defend themselves, their children born in this country because of the insidious racism in the name of pursuing immigrants, which is xenophobia. So xenophobia and racism have a long history of being intertwined, and the context today is one of the asks of the ACLU to you, to you, the board, was to stand up to this onslaught, to stand up for your community, stand up for your immigrant, hard-working agricultural and urban communities. To stand up means to speak up, to pass resolutions. You don't need to join us to go block the immigration people when they show up. We will. They show up here, and let me tell you, when they showed up in January, I went there with my daughter, it was a lot of young people. I was so reaffirmed that this struggle will continue because our young people are not giving up. You don't need to join us on those sidewalks and blocking the streets, and we will. We ask you to express your voice as a representative body of our community, to pass resolutions saying enough, our community deserves protection. Do not come to Kern and do something about the American Gulag, about this California city proposal for expanding the American Gulag to have thousands of ordinary, hard-working people locked up so that one incarceration corporation can make hundreds of millions of dollars. Speak up about the Gulag in McFarland. Speak up about the Gulag in Mesa Verde, Bakersfield. Shut them down. Do ordinances, pass plumbing regulations, and shut that damn thing off. Do something. I'll see you next year.
Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please state your name for the record.
Louis Gillam, G-I-L-L-H-A-M. Last night, I took a little time to review the records as recorded and placed on YouTube from last year's meeting of this nature, and I was impressed by how much, and struck by how much, the world has changed since that time. To be sure, concerns that were expressed at that forum are still with us, especially those concerning conditions inside detention centers. Last year, a request for one of our supervisors to visit one such center to examine conditions there was graciously accepted with quiet confidence, with trust that, of course, she would be able to do so. But the world has changed. This year, elected representatives have been denied and even detained for their attempts to enter and assess conditions at such centers. Agents hide behind masks, spill out of rented trucks on parking lots, promenade through parks, storm the streets, all in the name of Immigration and Customs Enforcement. No, those events did not all happen in Kern County, not yet. But the breakdown in trust that they breed is no respecter of county lines any more than the tremors of an earthquake. The reality on the ground is that ICE is conducting itself like an occupying force, and any cooperation or collaboration with that force, however statutorily sanctioned it may be, sends out shockwaves of fear and betrayal. The ground shifts. Trust is broken, and the broken trust of one is the broken trust of all. But the ground can shift again. Trust can be restored. In this not-so-brave new world, where brutal authoritarianism rattles the walls of the law itself, we must turn to the courage of our conscience. As Dr. King put it, "Noncooperation with evil is as much a moral obligation as is cooperation with good." We all, every one of us, face an inevitable ethical choice. On which end of the arc of the moral universe will we stand? When the fault lines open, there is no middle ground. Let us choose to bend toward justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillam. If we could please hold the applause. We generally tell, or ask the public to please not do that for any political position you may have, or, so please, if you could adhere to that, we greatly appreciate it. It just creates energy, it creates fear in the room. It'd just be better if we respect each other's position and save that for protests or other proper locations. Mr. Gillam, I did visit the facility at Mesa Verde with ACLU. I spent several hours there, met with several folks. I'm sorry that you didn't know that, but I wanted to let you know that I did, and I'd happily return again upon invitation. But thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, and it's nice to see you. Good morning. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Joey Williams, J-O-E-Y-W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S.
Welcome.
I'm not, Newton Noggin. Just wanted to say hello and good morning in my native language, a language that was spoken way before colonists came to this area, before Spanish and English was ever spoken. Our language was spoken here for time immemorial, and the folks that my gentleman back here called immigrants or undocumented, whoever you want to call them, we will call them indigenous. Because we, in my tribe, I represent the Kern Valley Indian Community. I'm the vice chair of the Kwaiyazoo Nua people out of Lake Isabella. My people come from the area of Tehachapi, the village, and the way we identify indigenous is that your ancestors are buried in the earth for time immemorial. So if you go to San Canyon, which I believe is in your district, Mr. Parlier, is you'll see all my relatives there for time immemorial, at least 18,000 years that have been buried there. And the reason why I say this, it lends me- yourself included, sir. And I just want to recognize the unceded territories. When I say unceded, it was never surrendered. There were 17 treaties that were ratified that went to Congress that were never ratified, put into a desk, that governed reservations and carved up California in a way that would have been equitable for native people. And it was never done, there were unbroken treaties. There were broken treaties, actually. The lands of the Chumash people over in La Beque area and out going towards the west, the Yocuts, whose lands we're currently on, the Katana Mook, which you would know as the Tahoma tribe in south, near going towards the grapevine, and the Tobata Labos up in the Kern River, and my tribe, the Kwaiyazu Nua people. I say this all because I know about kidnapping. I was kidnapped by the Kern County Sheriff's when I was seven years old in the front yard of my Aunt Della, who was the only native speaker, last native speaker of our language, and I never made it home. So I'm understanding the plight of our indigenous brothers and sisters when they're being taken into ICE. And I would like to say is that we have not changed immigration policy since 1986. And I wasn't going to speak today, but my professor, my mentor, Dr. Santos, felt like he put me on the spot. He's been a great mentor and teacher, and I don't want to be a cop, everyone knows that in the room, but if I was, he's, I'm going to be a good cop today, and definitely he's a more harsher cop in this situation. But about the 1986 IRCA law, which was actually passed by Ronald Reagan, a conservative with the Democratic Congress, that actually paved the way for a humane immigration system. I really appreciate the statistics you guys all presented today. I think it paints a nice picture. But what I would challenge us to do is to look deeper into the current stats and get an update of the 2025 figures since, and I'm not going to paint the picture that it's been Donald Trump all the time. We know President Barack Obama deported 3 million people. We know that Joe Biden continued that, but it's been a systemic issue. And as Dr. Santos said, it's been a war on the immigrant indigenous people. And I feel that we got a way, if we work together, to right that. That's why I decided to speak today, because I think we can look at those mid-figures and figure out if those have increased with the current administration, and then by January, having another forum here to get the updated stats so we can take steps from there. I agree with the sister who shared, we should keep this a separate issue. If you've done your crime, you've done your time, and the immigration status is another thing. I do live and work in Los Angeles, and I have seen up front the protests and the things that are there. And they're not to scale what people think they are, but it is people that are taking a stand with their neighbors. And I think that as a community, we should come together, address these issues, come to a humane and common sense plan and make sure that, because we're all immigrants, this is a, it's a colony when we look at it, and a country, and we have laws, but those laws have not always been heard by the colonists when they set them out. So I thank you so much for your time, and thank you, nice to see some of you all here today, and you guys have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
I addressed him, he addressed me.
No, Mr. Sanders, you had your opportunity to speak. I'm sorry, I have to follow the rules, especially on this forum, as it is closely tracked by the DOJ. We have to follow every rule. I'm so sorry. But if you had an opportunity to speak, thank you.
I just wanted to say I'm a legal immigrant.
Okay. Understood, Mr. Sanders, understood.
Buenos dias, good morning. I'm Dr. Nora Cisneros, first name N-O-R-A, last name C-I-S-N-E-R-O-S. Thank you all for your presentations, especially today ACLU, for this continued work and relationship and all community partners and all the relatives that have spoken before. I come to you today very briefly to share also, as an educator, following the footsteps of many that have already come up here, to bring attention to the current status and the impact of ICE's activities in January, continuing in L.A., but the impact that that has on our current students. As an educator, right, of many students full-time, my students are still in fear about what happened in January. That fear has permeated every aspect of their lives. And I'm not just talking about the youth under ages 17, I'm talking about the youth and young adults that are already overpoliced in their schools, they're already overpoliced in their neighborhoods with gazillion probation trucks going around every park and community. That's a reality that my students live in. To me, as an educator, it's important to be able to say that I am part of that cadre of those, of, I'm a daughter of immigrants, I'm part of that cadre of ethnic studies professors and scholars that will be helping equip our students to really keep up with beyond the TRUTH Act, right? Actually looking at the impact of those two individuals last year, but the individuals this year, right, that were detained, the families whose lives were destroyed, the students who are emailing me already a week before semesters begin across universities in California, students from everywhere emailing professors, asking, wondering if there will be entanglements, if there will be connections and communication between their local law enforcement and ICE, right? Even though, right, we're not, they're not supposed to have that worry, they do. And this is, again, the majority, right, will soon be the majority of the population, right? So when we're thinking about investing in Kern County, when we're thinking about growing and having our first-generation students be the first professionals in their community, we want them to stay here. I want to be able to tell my students that there will be no communications from the sheriff's office, from any other local law enforcement, and ICE. I want to be able to tell my students that. More importantly, I will be asking my students, right, as an educator, to be the emerging scholars and historians of their communities. And so, yes, we will see you next year with many folks, more young folks especially. But I share that with you, I thank you for your time, and of course, like everyone here, we'll be keeping in communication, but know that our youth are watching us, right? And it's not just the young children, but it's also our young folks that are already overpoliced in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other public speakers who have not spoken on this item yet? Good morning, welcome. Please state your name for the record, spell it too, please.
Okay, good morning. Rosa Lopez, L.O.P.E.Z. I'm here to talk to you as a long-term resident of this county and a first-generation indigenous immigrant from the state of Oaxaca in Mexico. I mean, I had a whole speech, but I just wanted to point, make two points. One, that was raised earlier by Supervisor Couch about, you know, what is our state law, SB 54 and the TRUTH Act and the TRUST Act? What we're trying to, those state laws is the floor. You, as the county representatives and as this community, and what we're asking today is that we can do better. I think we're doing minimum, holding this forum once a week, I mean, once a year, and still allowing, within the parameters of the state law, communication and some collaboration with ICE. And what we're saying is that this is the floor. We can do better, and we should do better. Like previous speaker, like Dr. Santos have said, you represent Kern County, which is over 50% Hispanic community. Regardless of our migration status and regardless of our political affiliation, this is impacting all of us, whether our neighbors, our coworkers, who are living in fear, who are afraid to go to, you know, youth who are afraid to go to school. And it's, well, if we haven't felt it, it will impact our local economy. We've heard from some of our farmers in Central Valley, not just in Kern, raise concerns about not having enough workers. But this is a humanity issue. Like, we shouldn't allow, you know, we shouldn't say that we support if they did it the legal way. Some of the comments made earlier, it just remind me of how much education, you know, how much we need to invest in education. There's a lot of misunderstanding about what is the immigration process or immigration system. What we're saying is that people who look like me, people who are not white and blue eyes and blond, are attacked, whether you have legal status or you don't. You know, and so what we're saying is that follow the law, follow the law. What we're seeing happen in January and what we're seeing happen in L.A. is against our constitutional rights. People who are living, are out in the community, on their way to work, on their way to school, but because they look a certain way, they dress a certain way, they're being targeted. And so if we're going to say that, oh, let's follow the law, then let's remember that the Constitution guarantees rights for all of us that call this country home, regardless of our immigration status. So what we're asking is that we should be better informed about the immigration legal system before we start separating, because kind of what the first speaker said, let's be respectful, let's listen to each other, but yeah, let's, you know, let's be honest and let's speak the realities of what is happening, not what we're seeing in the news or not what you're hearing. One, so what we're asking as a community is we could do better and we should do better, because this has impacted our entire county, which is largely immigrant community, largely over 50% Hispanic. So we're asking you to do more, speak up against what is happening, what this federal government is doing. And then two, let's be better aware of what are we saying, what we're saying, you know, do it the right way, get in line, follow the law. That is a misunderstood, I guess, understanding of what the immigration legal system is. And then, I guess thoroughly, one of the comments about, like, well, if you are qualified, you should be, you know, punished, or you should be detained. What we're saying is that because you were born in a different country, you're receiving double punishment. Somebody who commits the same crime, who has the fortune of have legal status, are not being imprisoned in civil detention because they happen to be born in a different country. And so, again, let's represent this entire, this county, let's address the realities of what we're seeing unfold in this community, and let's speak up. Like, enough is enough to just hide behind this statement that this is a federal issue, this doesn't impact us. It does impact us. And folks are out on the streets supporting, monitoring what is happening, but you, as our representatives, can do better and should do better by us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Welcome, good morning. Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Good morning. My name is Lori Pesante, and I'm here in my personal capacity. So it was quite fitting that, you know, we started out this morning with Vincent Martinez. My brother actually just retired from the Navy in March, and he sent me a photograph this morning at 8:30 from 35,000 feet above Bakersfield, because upon his retirement, he went to go work for an airline. And it was beautiful, there was light coming in, you know, as the dawn, and you could see the lights of the city. It was really quite lovely. And I appreciated seeing that this morning, especially as we were talking about dropping kids off and thinking about what is the bigger picture here? What is the bigger picture? Now, from my little perspective and my lived experience, I am the daughter of two L.A. sheriffs. My dad still goes and fixes radios in East L.A. at the communications center. That's his jam. He's been a sheriff's deputy his whole life. My mom was one of the first women to ever work patrol in the United States in West Hollywood Station. I don't know if you knew that.
I didn't know that.
She has stories.
That's really cool.
I have worked for a district attorney's office, and then I got my real experience here as a public defender. And I had pretty much most of the caseload of folks who had immigration overlap with the criminal system. But I have to tell you that what I am observing here in California, what we saw in January, what we saw happen in Los Angeles with the involvement of the National Guard, by the way, some of them, my students, because I now adjunct at Bakersfield College, they got called up to go down there, to stand across from fellow Californians. I'm going to go to Washington, D.C. with my eight-year-old in September. I'm afraid to go. I'm afraid to go, because what I'm seeing, we should all be profoundly disturbed by the complete obliteration of the Fourth Amendment. Arresting people because they're in a Home Depot parking lot is not reasonable suspicion. It is not. Arresting someone because they happen to be a landscaper is not reasonable suspicion. Arresting or trying to detain them because they're speaking a language other than English or their skin is a different color is not reasonable suspicion. And yet, we've got these masked folks in unmarked vehicles and federal agents working 100% on immigration. We're having DEA, I spoke to one over the summer, a DEA agent spends 100% of his time arresting people who are showing up to their immigration appointments. These are not criminals. These are not the people we should be spending billions of dollars trying to detain and then sending them to some other country that they're not even from. They're arresting U.S. citizens. This is not okay. And I think, I think, I see it coming, and I really implore each and every person in this room who can hear my voice, who is already hearing the mess I'm about to say in their hearts already, it is going to come down to individuals, individuals. It's not about who's in the White House, it's not about the broader systems and the other problems, it's going to come down to an individual. It's going to come down to a moment where maybe I'm in Washington, D.C., and maybe there are National Guardsmen there who have come in from red states and have been fed a bunch of garbage in their information ecosystem bubbles, and they see, oh my gosh, a liberal, ooh, and now they're armed. The shot heard round the world at Lexington and Concord was all it took to start the Revolutionary War. Who is going to be that individual in that moment when, yes, they might have a badge, yes, they might have a weapon, but do they have to use it? Do they have to violate the Constitution? Do they have to say, this person is different from me, and yeah, that makes me a little afraid, so guess what, it's going down? Is that where we have come to? We cannot afford to erase the lines that the Constitution has forged within our souls as a nation. We're going to hit 250 years next year. Is the time now to stand up for the Fourth Amendment, to insist, I mean, retrain everybody? That's part of the settlement, right, for CBP, for ICE, to retrain them on the Fourth Amendment? Have those conversations now. It is no longer a time when we can blur the lines, we can no longer blur the lines on anybody's rights, because if they don't work for the people who are different from you, they are never going to work for you.
Thank you, Ms. Pesante. Who else do we have this morning? Can I get a show of hands as to who would still like to speak here? I see three, three, okay. Good morning, welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Eddy Lane, E.D.D.Y.L.A.I.N.E. I'm the proud grandson of some, of one who would now be called an illegal alien. Gustav Leine jumped ship in 1898 in San Francisco, and he had no papers of any kind. He just wanted to come to our America and the land of opportunity. Thank you, Gustav Leine, for doing that, otherwise I wouldn't be here today. I'm currently a volunteer. I visit Mesa Verde Detention Center on a regular basis, 1.3 miles from this board chambers. We are all human beings. Eleanor Roosevelt emphasized to the First United Nations Assembly after reading letters from Jewish survivors of World War II. And for those of us raised in the Christian tradition, the good book speaks of treating others as brothers and sisters. But that is not happening in GEO's Mesa Verde. Just a few stories, all true, names changed. Marcos. Last Sunday, one of our volunteers visited Marcos. He didn't look well. He said that several guys in the dorm were sick, but medical attention was not easy to obtain. During the week, he asked for a mask. GEO staff refused to give him one. Carlos. A week ago Sunday, we saw Carlos in the visitation room. His nose was running, visible to all who looked at him. He asked for a mask. The guard refused. Juan. When he was first incarcerated, Juan told the staff he was diabetic and needed insulin. When he was finally tested, his blood sugar level was 410, far above the 120 maximum safe level. Let me add a word about Juan. Juan reported into ICE in San Francisco, as he has done for years. Juan runs a little business up in San Rafael. Juan pays Social Security. He's paying my Social Security. Juan had a work permit. He was checking in on a routine, routine ICE check. He didn't even take his medicine with him, because it was so routine. And the result? He wasn't being monitored, and he had that 410 blood level, insulin level, or blood sugar level. A few weeks ago, the man next to Juan's bunk, not more than four feet away, they're very crowded in there. He wasn't being monitored and he had that 410 blood level, insulin level, or blood sugar level. A few weeks ago, the man next to Juan's bunk, not more than four feet away, they're very crowded in there, got COVID and was taken to isolation. Carlos himself was sick for several days. However, he and the others who were exposed to the man with COVID were not tested. Not tested when the guy with COVID is sent to isolation? Manuel was only given IV profin when he complained of severe pain in his ankle. After three days, medical staff x-rayed his ankle, it was broken. Two requests. First, and this would be for all of the supervisors, Supervisor Peters, Couch, Perez, Flores, and Parlier, visit with us in Mesa Verde, 1.3 miles from here, or up in McFarland. Come with us and meet the men and women who are now detained. Secondly, send the Kern County Health Department into Mesa Verde to investigate these conditions. The Bakersfield City Police Department did send two investigators in to investigate an altercation that resulted in a broken finger. The County of Kern can do the same. It can investigate health conditions in Mesa Verde. Mesa Verde is in the County of Kern. Whether funded by or administered by the state or federal government or contracted firms, human beings in the county firm should be treated with care and compassion. This is not happening. Over 2,000 years ago, Pontius Pilate washed his hands to avoid responsibility. Abraham Lincoln spoke of the sin of silence. We all have responsibility for each other as human beings, all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Welcome. Good morning. Please state and spell your name.
My name is Bob Coons, C-O-O-N-S. I also have visited Mesa Verde for about the last eight years on a regular basis. And I could tell you lots of stories. I might share one or two with you. But almost a year ago, to the date, Quasi, which is an organization of people here in town that are trying to help people in these immigration centers, sponsored a fundraiser for people could have an opportunity to actually call their loved ones from their detention centers. And the speaker from that was the head of Global Relief. Global Relief is an 85-year-old organization. It's the largest nonprofit organization in the United States that has welcomed 800,000 immigrants to the United States in 85 years, over 50,000 volunteers. And the CEO from that meets with the head of Morocco, state leaders worldwide. And a year ago, he said, the amount of judges that are available for people to get due diligence on their things, it would take three years for what we had a year ago, at the least, for them to catch up. ICE right now is the fourth-largest military in the world. The amount of money that's being spent on ICE is incredible. And what is being done to people, families, communities is just unbelievable. Earlier, I heard about things are going on in Florida. Two weeks ago, I walked in and there was a young lady that was there visiting her fiance. She was in, he was in Florida, 21 years there. He has his own business, three kids, just taking off the streets, flown from Florida to Mesa Verde. She had to fly all the way from Florida to try to find where he is to meet or try to talk with him. One was just arrested two weeks ago in Oakland, was arrested, picked up. He was flown to Tacoma. These are not ways in which people have an opportunity to speak with their families or get any type of resources. People that have no record, that are, they came for refuge, have been picked up and sent to different countries. People don't even know where they're at. One young man I've met and worked with and talked to, he has been in detention centers for six years. Six years, an innocent person. I wonder what it'd like for you to spend five days in jail, six years. He's from Liberia. His parents were murdered. He came to the United States and his calling his American mother took him in. He has been trying to get his, you know, freedom, stay in the country for six years. It takes, when we talk to people, yeah, I got a court date. When is it? Six months, a year, it gets postponed. That is how much that he wants to stay in this country. He's from Newark, New Jersey, very rough area. One of his sister had great grades. Cory Booker was the mayor, came in and started to help people in the different schools, trying to get help to get studying and stuff. His sister had great grades. He helped her get a scholarship to South Carolina. And she said that, you know, well, when you get out of here, come see me if you need any help. Well, she graduated, came to visit him and said, you know, I graduated, I'd like to, I'm having a little trouble getting a job. And he said, well, you make a pretty good teacher. And he said, well, I studied medicine, you know, I'm not, wasn't. And he said, well, I think you could be a really good teacher. She has been an elementary seventh-grade teacher for 12 years now. Her brother has been in prison for six years trying to get his freedom. We have a broke system. No real changes have been done in this since 1965. We need a pathway. We need to have compassion. And I invite anyone to come with me to sit down and talk to people. The kindest person I've met my whole life, spent 33 years in prison and is in Napa right now and is the most ideal person you ever can meet. Gets up in the morning, calls people, they make sure they go to AA, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, there is incredible stories. There should be movies about the faith that the people have there is unbelievable, too. There are people that literally have found God for the first time and that's the only thing that made their life what it can be today. I beg you, this is what we need to remember. To say nothing is saying something. You must denounce things you are against, or one might believe that you support things you really do not. This is just the beginning in so many different things. Climate, education, we could go on and on. But all of us in this room need to be aware of our duty as a citizen of this United States to make it the best country in the world and to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Good morning. Please state your name and spell it.
Good morning, still. Maria Sofia Corona, C-O-R-O-N-A. I come to you in my personal and professional capacity. I am a Kern resident. I live, work here and pay taxes here. I vote here. I also work alongside the UFW Foundation, one of your community-serving organizations that has been here, has its roots deeper to the 70s, but at least since 2006. And in that time, we have served hundreds and thousands of Kern residents, from everyday services, emergency services during the COVID pandemic, to immigration services. I am an immigration attorney by trade. And we come here because we want to bring you some examples of sadly, of what we're seeing in our community and the terror they are facing and where we think your leadership and especially the Sheriff's Department can make a difference at this critical time. The issues that we're seeing sadly do spill over from the terror that all immigrants, all Latinos are facing because of the unlawful actions of this administration. We saw it here locally in January 6th. We responded. But sadly, the terror continues. The community, the fear didn't go away. People weren't going to school, sending their childrens to school. People weren't showing up to work. We were getting those calls. What do we do? Please tell me. Please advise me. Those things will continue to happen sadly, will continue to affect our school system, will continue to affect our work. Our employers are asking for help. But they're also affecting everyday citizens who need to know that you have their support for everyday issues. If they are a victim of domestic violence, they need to know they can call the sheriff's police department and not be afraid. If they are a child that was a victim of trafficking, because we serve those clients, they need to be safe and feel assured that you will have their safety in mind. Sadly, we've seen also labor law violations in our backyard where employers will threaten workers with guns and workers need to feel safe that they also can have law enforcement's back. We have some pointed stories we wanted to share with you. But we also ask you to support a community forum, a forum where you can make clear that you are not ICE agents, that you are here to enforce local protection laws and you are here to help everyone regardless of immigration status. We also ask you to employ the best practices so there isn't confusion. There's already so much misunderstanding, so much fear in the community. Make it clear. Help clear the air. And that does take some action sometimes. That takes some statements, that takes working with community-based organizations to hold a forum. It makes yourself available and make sure that you're the voice, that it's not us telling them, but hearing it from you directly. So again, I thank you for your time. I do have some colleagues that will share some pointed examples that I hope you will take with you and that you will be open to collaborating with us to keep our community safe.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Karina Morales, M-O-R-A-L-E-S. Good morning, everyone. My name is Karina Morales and I'm a legal service provider with the UFW Foundation. And I work directly with immigrant communities here in Kern County, many of whom are farmworkers. Apologies if I get emotional. I'm known to be an emotional speaker, not by choice.
That's an emotional subject.
Yes. I want to remind us, those of you guys who are here today, that the numbers that other advocates have shared are not just statistics. We are talking about fathers, mothers and neighbors who are often separated from their families on their way to work. And these men who are often the primary breadwinners are detained, when they are detained, their families are left without income, struggling to pay rent or put food on the table. Farmworkers can be easy prey to unscrupulous employers and they need to know that you can protect them. Last year, the UFW Foundation had the privilege of helping over 100 farmworkers in Kern County and Fresno County apply for work authorization while they cooperated with labor agencies, while they investigated labor violations that were happening here in our backyard, as my colleague Sofia mentioned. These violations happen all too often because employers exploit workers' immigration status and get away with these egregious abuses. I know this reality personally. I have worked in the fields alongside my parents growing up. But even with that experience, I was still blinded to just how harsh these conditions can be and how frequently crimes against farmworkers go unreported because of fear of retaliation. That is why trust, transparency and accountability from law enforcement officials are so important. Kern County is built on the labor of immigrants and farmworkers. They deserve to feel protected by their local institutions and not hunted by them. Upholding SB 54 means keeping families together and ensuring that every resident feels safe living and working in the county we all call home. We should prioritize and protect Kern County's immigrant communities by ensuring adequate funding to the public defender's office so that every resident has access to legal representation and justice, establishing an immigrant legal defense fund to support families navigating a very complex immigration system, and standing up to harmful enforcement policies that tear apart families and spread fear in our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Claudia Cuesta, C-U-E-S-T-A. Yes, Claudia Cuesta, C-U-E-S-T-A.
Like the junior college.
Yes, exactly. I am an immigrant justice fellow here at the United Farmworker Foundation and I mainly represent unaccompanied minors, so I will be speaking about what I have seen with minors here in the county. I moved here because I deeply respected the history of Bakersfield and the community that Bakersfield has welcomed me into. I am a resident of District 5, your district, La Cia Perez. And Kern has serious local challenges, yet here we are allowing federal immigration enforcement to redirect our law enforcement's focus away from those local challenges. And Kern County residents are footing the bill. I work with unaccompanied minors, as I have mentioned, and many of these minors are fleeing their countries because of violence and life-threatening situations. These minors are not a threat to enforcement, nor are their families. Unaccompanied minors in Kern deserve care, support and protection, not fear of detention or deportation. Many are living in fear and they avoid school and law enforcement out of this fear. They fear that local law enforcement will collaborate with ICE and it erodes their trust, making minors feel less safe. But it also undermines this community that I mentioned. And community safety relies on trust, not fear of deportation or detention. I live about a block away from the ICE Center on Truckston. And I have seen many times on my way to work that local BPD officers are hanging out in the parking lot. And these types of incidents point to the need of clear statements and assurance that there is no collaboration with local law enforcement and ICE. Because many minors don't get this mixed signal that there may be this collaboration. And I will share one example. We have assisted minors who were being forced to work with no pay, as well as a teenage girl who was being sexually exploited and moved around to avoid detention. She believed if she contacted local officials, they would simply deport her. And so she was rescued through the tenacity of medical advocates who contacted Child Protection Services. And so this is why we call you to collaborate with trusting, serving communities and hold a community forum to ensure all vulnerable community members feel protected and put their community members first. Thank you.
I'd like you to contact my office so we can work together. I'm putting a forum together. I don't know what that would look like. I need to talk to my counsel and address some of that. But as chair, I would be, you know, I would be more than happy to move that along and get back to Mesa Verde and do another visit and collaborate on that. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Teo, T-A-Z-N-T-A-C-O-E-L-L-O. I am, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am born and raised here in Kern County in La Cia Perez's district, eventually moved to David Couch's district with deep roots in Lamont, California. And born and raised from parents of immigrants who also are here in Kern County, pay tax dollars as I do. And now I am an attorney with the UFW Foundation.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I am here because not only has my life experience led me to this position and being here and speaking in regards to this truth act, but also because working with the UFW, I have seen the impacts of any little collaboration of sheriffs with ICE. And I did want to address, we work with a lot of victims of domestic violence. There are victims who come to our office asking what they should do. And we give them basic resources and inform them that they can call the sheriff's office in order to help them. But unfortunately, as we know, many of them are scared because they fear that their immigration status will affect their reporting. They fear that if they report, they will be deported. And a lot of the times, not only is it their fear of deportation, but also the abusers use this against these women, right? So a lot of them suffer 10, 20, 30 years of abuse out of this fear. And I did want to highlight and emphasize the role the sheriff's office has in this in the sense that when we are helping these victims, they apply for U visas, that they're victims of crime and that they're cooperating with sheriffs. And all we ask sheriffs is certifications that this abuse happened. Your role is not to grant them immigration status. Your role is not to say, this person is worthy of staying here in the United States. All we need is a certification saying, they are victims of domestic violence, they are victims of a crime and they are cooperating with this investigation. And a lot of the time, we are getting denials from the sheriff's office. So that is why I'm standing here, just to remind you and inform you that that is the role that you play, not to give them immigration status, but just certifying that they were victims of a crime. And I also wanted to emphasize the community forum. Obviously, you stated that we can email you, so I appreciate you for that. And me as being a native from here and coming back and being an attorney, I do think that all of our supervisors' main focus should be our lack of education instead of spending our tax dollars on other things. I think our lack of our education is the biggest issue. I don't think it's fair for I don't think it's fair for me that I had to leave to get an education, email hundreds of places here to get internships and only getting one response, which was Norma from the ACLU and giving me an opportunity for an internship. So that's just why I'm here. Thank you.
Who else do we have to speak here? Okay, come on down. We are almost done here. It's been an incredibly informative and remarkable morning.
Good morning, Chairwoman and members of the board. My name is Amber Tovar, A-M-B-A-R-T-O-V-A-R. I come here today as a community member, but also as an attorney with the UFW Foundation. I am here today to express my strong opposition to the Kern County Sheriff's Department's ongoing collaboration with Immigration and Customs Enforcement. These practices directly undermine the California Values Act, which prohibits the use of local law enforcement resources for federal immigration enforcement. Kern County should not be complicit in practices that both egregiously undermine state law and erode trust between immigrant communities and public safety agencies. The department has shared today that they actively engage in triaging, deciphering whether someone meets, reporting, or transfer eligibility. This department has the authority to not respond to such requests. The Values Act provides guidance on practices that are the floor, meaning the bare minimum. And this county has a responsibility to its community members to do better than the floor. This department, however, makes a proactive choice to respond and expense staff time and limited financial resources, comes here before this body time and time again to request additional funds to carry out its operations, including those required to carry out their cooperation with ICE. This is an inefficient use of limited resources. The UFW Foundation has responded to reports of individuals being released from custody late at night, as late as 11 o'clock PM or 12 o'clock at midnight, only to be met by ICE agents waiting outside for them. These reports are especially troubling. This pattern strongly suggests coordination, whether implicit or explicit, between the sheriff's department and ICE. The simple delay of someone's release until the late hours of the night suggests unlawful coordination. In addition, the sheriff's department controls the release of information and has the ability to limit what is made public, yet continues to operate in ways that expose community members to targeted enforcement, whether they have in fact been convicted of an offense or simply charged of an offense. I want to share this story about a mother of two children, who I had the honor of speaking late last week. After her son reached out for help on her behalf, she is deeply afraid that ICE will come to her door and take her away from her US-born children, one of which is attending UC Berkeley this fall. That young man should not have to choose between staying home to protect his parents from immigration enforcement and a young brother and pursuing a college education. This is unacceptable. Our limited county resources must be directed towards community safety, not towards assisting federal immigration authorities. I respectfully request that the sheriff department limit their public information sharing of arrests and releases. Let the federal government make use of their exorbitant financial resources, not this county's resources. To the board, we ask that you affirm the board's commitment to the California Values Act and to protecting the safety and dignity of all Kern County residents regardless of their immigration status. If this body has resources to assign, I request that this body makes funds available to our neighbors whose US citizen children are being uprooted from their schools, neighborhoods, and communities through local law nonprofits, ensuring that the community have access to legal resources. As an immigration attorney, I can attest to the horrifying immigration enforcement tactics of this administration that violates constitutional rights of many, including US citizens, because of the color of their skin. We cannot be complicit, we cannot stand quiet, and I ask that this board join other counties and cities who are prioritizing its residents over the unconstitutional practices happening today. This board has a responsibility to uphold state law and ensure that our sheriff's department is acting in the best interest of our entire community. I urge you to act decisively to stop these practices. Thank you.
Who else do we have to speak this morning? Please come forward. Is there anybody else? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Chuck Shawver, S-H-A-W-V-E-R.
Thank you for spelling that.
And I come as a pastor in Kern County to a group of people who we care about and respect and always meet in front of the declaration that we trust in God, which is a common phrase in Kern County, in most government buildings. So I just come to remind you that God has spoken to the issue of immigration. The Old Testament clearly declares, "Do not harm the immigrants because you also were immigrants." And the New Testament follows up on that with Jesus's statement that "What you have done for the least of these, you have done for me." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see that as the end of the public hearing portion of this morning. I want to thank you all for coming here. It is very clear by the voices that we heard from this morning that there is profound disagreement and very passionate takes on these issues that are not the same and that are largely feel irresolvable on so many levels. It is frustrating that we are limited in this capacity or this forum here to attempt to work them out. They are decades, if not centuries, in the making and extremely complex. I want to thank my sheriff's department for their relationship with the ACLU. I want to thank the ACLU for their relationship with my sheriff's department. I appreciate you so much. These are remarkably complex issues with state laws changing, with federal laws changing, with administrations changing. We know these are the realities of elections, and we here are left at the local level to attempt to resolve them somehow and continue to do the great, important work that we have. I was very moved by what I heard this morning, very moved, and I am eager to continue these conversations with you and find the creative ways in which we communicate our hearts to one another, because that is really, I think, what is the hope here. Those are our greatest virtues, to communicate our heart and to determine as Americans how we proceed in changing times, in changing demographics, in changing politics. These are complex matters. They require the best of us as Americans, the best of us as neighbors. I want you to know I'm committed to this conversation, I'm committed to this process with you entirely. I was moved this year to see that our local law enforcement, not just here at the sheriff's department, but also at Bakersfield Police Department, complying with the law as it stands today, putting that forward and being very clear about that with the public. I was moved on a very personal level because my own father was a farmworker at six in the Weed Patch area, Lamont, Arvin. As a young boy, he and all his siblings, to hear from the Kern County Farm Bureau, ask the administration for compassion on these matters, recognizing how critical our farmworkers are in the multi-billion-dollar entities that are agricultural business here in Kern County, important on so many levels. And I can't tell you how many of our farm owners have conveyed to me all throughout the state and this nation, throughout my time at CSAC and through NACO, how much their farmworkers are absolute family to them. I have heard that conveyed to me more times than I could even... It is shocked me to hear that sentiment conveyed by so many farmers, conveyed also back and forth between farmworkers about farmers as well, the sense of familia that both feel, so many feel, towards each other for their shared contributions to this great economy, to Kern County and beyond, but also to their own family well-being. You know, I believe there's room here for compassion. I believe there's room here for collaboration and partnerships that we don't normally see. I believe there's so much there, and I appreciate every single corner of this county that came forward to express their concerns, to express their devotion to law and order, but also compassion in a time of great fear, a time of great confusion. I want to commit myself again to you to host an event, to return to Mesa Verde, to keep my heart and ears open, to listen and learn from you. Not everybody agrees with you. Not everybody on this board agrees with you, and that is okay. That is a reality, and that is going to continue to be our reality. But it does not mean that we cannot learn from one another, to share our hearts, and as the Kern County Farm Bureau implored this administration to not assume that, or they made a quite clear declaration in their statement, that immigrants and criminals are not synonymous with one another and that we should take an approach that does not begin with those ideas. So I appreciate the Farm Bureau, I appreciate my sheriff's department, I appreciate the Bakersfield Police Department, who are often thrust in the middle of a pretty nasty political environment, and I see them complying with the law and being such gentlemen and being open to groups like the ACLU that historically have been, we have historically been polarized. So, thank you. I appreciate your presentation. It was thorough and excellent. Thank you to the public, all of you, for your opinions. You all are members of this community and you all matter, you're all important. But I want to commit myself to you to be part of this process because this is not going away. These matters are going to get more complex, but I believe there's a lot of partnership and there's a lot of love in this community, more than you might think, and there's a lot of room for collaboration. So thank you all. We're gonna... Gentlemen, if you don't have anything to add at this time, I don't see you punched in or adding, but thank you again for your time. We do have a very important matter to get to here, so we're going to close this out. I believe it's receive and file, Kathy, is that correct?
It's not required, but you could make a motion to receive and file the PowerPoints that we received.
Okay. So, gentlemen, if we could move on. Thank you Supervisor Couch. Thank you Supervisor Flores. We're going to receive and file these, the reports that have been received today. Again, to the public, thank you. Thank you for your heart, thank you for sharing, and thank you for the openness and willingness to be able to disagree with cordiality and civility, which is the American way and we should strive to do every time we meet in these chambers. Thank you, God bless you. I appreciate your hard work. We're going to move on to the last agenda item.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Oops, thank you. Appreciate that. We're going to move forward to the remaining item for this morning. I see our DHS Director coming forward, Lito Marillo. We'll hear from him momentarily. We have a matter under Human Services Number 31, which is a request to explore contracting with qualified experts for external review of child welfare services. In light of the time, I'm going to stop speaking and turn the floor over to our Director, Lito Marillo. Thank you, sir, for your work and for bringing this matter forward today. I greatly appreciate it. The floor is yours, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to bring this item before you today. I'm joined here today by my Chief Deputy Vanessa Frando and my Assistant Director Maria Bermudez. Before I begin, I want to express my deepest condolences to the family and to our entire community for the tragic loss we've all endured. We fully recognize the magnitude of this loss and the responsibility we have to continually improve so tragedies like this are prevented in the future. I also want to take a moment to express my gratitude to the social workers who remain dedicated to serving and protecting the children in our community. They too are part of this community, and like so many in our community, they have been deeply affected by this tragic event. While there are no words that can erase the pain we're all feeling as a community, it is our hope this measure will be a step towards healing. Before you today is a department request to explore contracting with qualified experts to conduct an independent external review of the Kern County's Department of Human Services Child Protective Services. This is just more than a procedural step. It's a pledge to closely examine our processes and procedures, identify ways to improve, and do everything possible to safeguard the children in our community. In January of 2006, the Child Welfare League of America, CWLA, a nationally recognized leader in child welfare expertise, submitted a proposal to the county administrative office to conduct a comprehensive systems review of child welfare services. By October of that year, the review was completed and DHS partnered with CWLA to co-develop a strategic plan based on its recommendations. The goal was not only to improve service delivery, but also to build a culture of continuous improvement. DHS subsequently engaged CWLA for additional consultation on developing and monitoring the plan's implementation. Many of the best practices identified during the review remain in place today, including training and family engagement, quality assurance reviews, regular updates to policies and procedures, and establishment of employee universal expectation and core competency, among other ongoing improvements. In preparing for this agenda item, we reached out to other counties throughout the state who are familiar with the organization that conducts these types of reviews. These reviews demand specialized expertise to thoroughly examine and assess our CPS operations, including our processes, our procedures, case reviews, and the state and federal laws that govern CPS. These reviews typically involve documenting mapping our entire operational processes, evaluating staffing capacity and ratios within CPS, evaluating service delivery models, and engaging community partners and key stakeholders through interviews, focus groups, and surveys. At the conclusion of the review, a report will be prepared that will include possible gaps, deficiencies, and strengths to build upon within CPS. Based on the findings, the recommendations will be developed and presented to your board for approval by the contracted provider. Lastly, I want to take an opportunity to share information related to the recently released April 2025 Grand Jury Report, which raised concern about CPS social worker retention, vacancies, pay, and overall departmental budget. We appreciate the Grand Jury's report and are continually working on multiple areas. CPS bears an immense responsibility, one we approach with the utmost seriousness. Their work lives in a space between protecting children from harm and protecting them from the pain of losing their family with every decision carrying profound consequences. At times, those decisions are made more difficult whether by the few opportunities to meet with a family or by insufficient evidence to present a case for removal in court. For social workers, this constant balancing act is one of the most emotionally demanding impacts of their job, and for many, it becomes a challenge to remain in the field. To support retention and overall workload, CPS continues to prioritize competitive pay and reducing vacancies. Since January of 2022, salaries for social service workers have been a key focus, increasing by 27% overall and by as much as 37% in hard-to-fill areas such as emergency response and court From 2021 to 2025, CPS social worker vacancies have declined from 41 to 29, bringing the overall vacancy rate down to 9.82%. Emergency response social worker vacancies also dropping from 10 to 5, resulting in a 7.94% vacancy rate. While this is encouraging progress, maintaining these lower rates will be a challenge in the near future as the fiscal impacts of the federal HR-1 bill are expected to place additional strain on our budget. With that said, we know filling vacancies alone are not the only solution. Real improvement starts with us, through stronger training, more consistent practices, ongoing efforts to lower caseloads for quicker and more effective responses, and a deeper commitment to engaging families, especially those facing complex social challenges. We continue to ask for the community's partnership. We truly depend on your eyes, your voice, and your compassion. We need neighbors who step in when something doesn't feel right, and families and schools, faith-based groups, and local organizations willing to stand by those in crisis. Above all, we're committed to earning your trust, not because it makes sense, but because every child deserves a community united in their protection. In closing, we welcome this opportunity and remain fully dedicated to identifying and implementing ways to improve, strengthen, and enhance CPS operations. If your board approves the agenda item, we will return to your board with a contracted provider for your consideration and approval. provider for your consideration and approval, and a review will begin shortly thereafter. This concludes my presentation, and we're available to answer any questions your board may have on this agenda item. Thank you.
Lito, thank you very much. There are members of the public here who would like to speak on this matter. Invite you, please, to the podium warmly and graciously and with heavy hearts. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and spell it if you wouldn't mind, sir.
Yes, first name Mario, M.A.R.I.O., last name Manganello, M.A.N.G.A.N.I.E.L.L.O.
Welcome, Mario.
Yes. I come to you guys as a child development major. I also was blessed to be able to work in the literacy by third grade program, where I learned that if kids don't read at grade level by grade three, they have a 75% chance of dropping out of or not completing high school. And I'm actually from Fresno, drove down this morning from Fresno for this issue. And I looked up the Bakersfield numbers. Last year, only 21% of the children read at grade level by grade three, so that's very, you know, very troubling. Like I said, 75% chance of dropping out of high school. And so, a big issue with that is violence. It's been, it's been studied and violence in the communities, violence at home is a big issue with them not being able to read, because like anybody else, you know, if you've got something that's on your mind when you go to work, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna take away from your availability to learn, and it's gonna take away from your availability. So, them having that problem is a big issue. So, just protect the kids. Do whatever you can to protect them, because it's a huge issue.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for taking the time to be here. Please come forward. Whoever is here to speak, please state your name for the record. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Albert Ma, last name spelled M.A. So, I'm a local child psychiatrist, serving the community for the last 20 years. And so, I have been to a lot of crisis situations, and my favorite quote is, "You can be part of the problem, or you can be part of the solution." I think there is a solution for Kern County, and we don't need to reinvent the wheel. So, about 30 years ago, when I was a medical student still in Chicago, there was exactly identical case, a very young child, under foster care, had a first unsupervised visit. The next morning, she was found hanging from the bathtub. And so, it was an uproar similar to this in Chicago. And so, the city tapped the University of Illinois, so we had an extremely well-known program for child psychiatry training. So, Dr. Laura Miller, a very renowned psychiatrist, she designed this program called Kern Assessment Team. So, for cases that's considered high risk due to mental illness, addictions, abuse, or neglect in the past, either the court or CPS will refer the case directly to the child assessment program. So, within one afternoon, there will be a team of psychiatrists, psychologists, and social workers, therapists, and the CPS caseworker will meet. They will assess each case in detail about the relationship quality with the parents and the child, and also, we will interview every family member for potential mental illness and addiction issue. If it's identified, the team will offer treatment. So, we don't refer them out and say, "Two weeks later, you can see this guy." Most people don't ever make those appointments. And also, we will have a meeting at the end of the day to make a recommendation to court to, about the safety. So, I moved to Bakersfield 20 years ago, when I was hired by UCLA to open the child training program, and I realized there's no such thing in Kern County. I have tried to sell the idea to everyone I see, and here we are, and I don't believe anyone was interested. So, it'd take a child to lose her life for us to come here and discuss this case. So, I have a summary of, one-page summary of how the program worked in Chicago, and I think I will be happy to donate my time with, to help create such a program if there's an interest. And I want to leave everyone with a sobering statistic. From now until tomorrow this time, six other children in America will die from abuse. And then, there are about 1,400 kids from now until this time tomorrow will suffer abuse without being noticed. So, I think some, something, some evidence scientifically-based program should be considered to address, and there has been a successful program already in Chicago, and there's no reason we would not consider having a program as such. So, if it is okay, I will leave this envelope. Thank you.
Dr. Ma, thank you. If it's okay with you, I want to reach out to you and have a sit-down with our department and yourself to discuss next possible steps. I can't commit my board, of course, but I want to take the, take the initiative, and I want to appreciate you for coming here with solutions and ideas that is so meaningful and so helpful. Thank you for your expertise and for your concern and compassion for the children of Kern County. I really appreciate you. Do we have other speakers here today? As you, as you have heard, our department has been proactive in proposing a way in which we can take a very serious look at our gaps, a gap analysis essentially, that will allow this board to make more informed decisions about how we fund and how we think about the Department of Human Services. So, that is what's on the table now. Welcome, and please state and spell your name.
Brooke Malley Alt, B.R.O.O.K.E., Malley, M.A.L.L.E.Y., space, A.U.L.T. Good morning. I am here as a community member, but also as a school counselor, as a trustee of the Bakersfield City School District, and as a mother. I have seen firsthand how broken Kern County's child protective service system is. Over the years, I've written more reports than I can count, sometimes multiple on the same child, and almost every single time, nothing happened. Nearly two decades, only one report I filed ever led to a removal, and in that case, the charges against the abuser were dismissed, and the child was swiftly returned home, and I don't know whatever became of her, because she moved schools quickly after. As a mandated reporter, once we file, we're told it is our duty, that our duty is done and to let CPS handle it. But too often, what comes back is a letter saying that there is no need to remove the child from the home. We feel helpless because we know what we've seen, yet we're told to stand back. Many educators I know feel they must put up walls around their hearts just to stay sane after so many dead ends. I'll never forget when a CPS worker from Los Angeles came here to help one of my students. That act of compassion showed me how little I expect from our current system, and I know I'm not alone. Teachers and staff across this county file reports and plead for help, while children return to school every day quieter, more withdrawn, sometimes showing signs no child should have to carry. I want to acknowledge the CPS workers themselves. They carry enormous caseloads, they care deeply, and they're doing the best they can with what little they are given. This is not about their commitment, it's about the structure that leaves them powerless and leaves our children unprotected, because we, as a community, have not prioritized them. So, today, I asked the board to take action, to reorganize the system, fund it not as an afterthought, but as a priority, demand accountability, and push for real change, not another round of empty promises. Eight-year-old Genesis Mata should be here today, and she's not. Let her name remind us that doing nothing is not an option. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Thank you for your patience this morning to speak on these matters. To all of you, thank you so much. Welcome.
Welcome, I mean, hello. My name is Barbara Cisneros, and I'd like to acknowledge the Chair and the board members. Thank you for hearing me out. My name is Barbara, B.A.R., B.A.R.A., Cisneros, C.I.S.N.E.R.O.S., and I come on a level of professional and personal, a personal matter. If it wasn't for the death of Genesis Mata, I wouldn't be here. She has encouraged me to come and speak today, and I did take time off work, and I'm trying to, I'll try to hurry and be brief. I want to just give you a little brief of my history, and, and then I want to offer some resolutions as if, you know, any way that I can. I had a son that was killed in 2016, April. In September of 2016, he had a son. He was born to his mother, that his mother was addicted to meth. They kept my grandson in the hospital for about a month. I was not aware if he was addicted or not. They didn't give me any information. Because my son's not here, they wouldn't give me any information. For, for over eight years now, I've been fighting with the system, and I've been fighting with CPS, and I've been fighting with going to court to try to get my grandson. I've had so many bad experiences with CPS. CPS has been called on this, my grandson's mother, five to six times, I know of, not by personal, but by schools, by hospitals, by social service workers, and then by a couple of personal family members. The mother has been homeless from four to five to six times, staying in and out of hotels, on drugs, in bug and drug-infested places, when my, the latest incident was with my grandson not having any food where he was at. When I decided to take her to court in 2022 for guardianship, I had substantial factual evidence from hospitals, from social workers, from the Sheriff's Department. The judge at the Juvenile Justice Court system omitted a lot of the factual evidence. There was dirty disgusting, a dirty disgusting, disgusting mess inside the house that I have, I had pictures of. He omitted everything. He was very biased. Two months later, he got fired. My grandson is still living in and out of hotels, and I'm the only one here to protect him. I'm the only one that has a voice for him. I know Genesis Mata didn't die in vain, because she's the voice crying out for other children that are being abused and neglected. I am still today, this day, fighting for my grandson. I called CPS the other day to let them know he didn't have no food. He was only eating mac and cheese. She says, "Well, mac and cheese constitutes as food. He's living in a crowded, bug-infested, drug-infested hotel behind Odell's."
Are y'all his dad?
And, and she says, "Well, as long as he has a roof over his head." This just made it so ridiculous, and this just made me, I'm not here to blame anybody, because I think as a society, I think as a family, we can do more. There's resources out there that families don't know of. I've been to guardianship court. I've been to family court. I am in the process right now of filing visitation papers, because I did go to guardianship court, and I stopped it because we came to an agreement to visitation, so they stopped it without prejudice. So, I am able to take her back to guardianship court, but I just don't have the time and the documentation, so I'm doing visitation court right now. And I just feel that we need to be more stricter on the, the, the families that are staying in hotels, stricter guidelines. I worked, I've worked in nonprofit agencies for over 20 years. I've worked with the Bakersfield Homeless Shelter, connected with the Department of Human Services. We were helping CalWorks participants get into homes that were homeless, and the families, there was no mandatory home visits. There was no, there was no drug testing. There was, they were just helping them, they were just handing out funds to, to let them stay in hotels, handing out funds. I think we need to help our children here first. I heard, I'm all in agreement with, with the situation with ICE and, and, and everything, but even criminals get assigned public defenders. Why can't children that are going through the system, that families that are fighting for them, get appointed a public defender to at least help them with, with consultations, with, with paperwork, with representation if needed? Like, we need to redirect these funds to resources that will help these families that are fighting for their, for their grandkids, for their nieces, for their nephews, for kids that are being neglected and abused. He's not being physically abused that I know of, but he's being severely neglected, and to me, that is working towards the abuse, because mentally, he's not doing well. He's being subjected to a lot of things that, and she has other children, and I just want to be a voice to help, but I don't want to blame, blame, blame. I want to, I want to see some resolutions, and I can help, because I, like I said, I've worked in that sector of working with homeless, the homeless. I work right now with the homeless veterans, but I, I want to see some resolutions and some resources, and I know that, like I said, I know Genesis Mata did not die in vain. She's a voice crying out for other children right now. So, I just thank you for your time, and hopefully, things will change for the children.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you for being here. Supervisor Parley, I see you punched in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna reserve my comments regarding Genesis till all the speakers are done, but Mrs. Cisneros brought up a specific issue, and Lito, I would ask that please have staff follow-up with her regarding, you know, the purported issues. We want to run that down, and if there's anything there that we, we figure it out. Also, if you'd like to go talk to my staff, they're on the fifth floor, room 502, and they'd love to hear from you too. Thank you so much.
Well done Supervisor. Thank you. Who else do we have here? Oh, excuse me, Lito.
Supervisor Parley, I see you punched in. Absolutely. If I can get Mrs. Cisneros' contact information, that'd be great.
Thanks, Lito.
Thank you so much, Lito. And thank you, Chris. Supervisor Parley, excuse me. Who else do we have today to speak on this matter? We have on the proposal a external outside audit and a gap analysis of this department. So, that is what is being proposed. Welcome, sir.
Hello, I'm Alejandro Rocha. I'm a community member. I believe you did a presentation in one of my classes.
Nice to see you, Alejandro.
Nice to see you too. I'm here on the matter of Genesis Mata. First, I want to say I'm deeply concerned that all the people who were here left when it transitioned to this topic. I come as a youth who lived on the motels in Union with my four brothers when I was a kid. The first time we got taken away was because my mom tried to kill my grandmother while we were at school. We were taken away, we were in the Jameson Center for three days, and then we were returned to my mother. But a few years after that situation, we were taken away again. I had thought that going into foster homes in the system was going to help. We moved into, we went to a few foster homes. Eventually, we were put all together. I have four brothers, so it was a big caseload. So, I do understand that social workers are overwhelmed. Yes, they have huge amounts of caseloads, but, almost like Genesis Mata, my brothers had reported multiple times that they were being abused in the foster home, and they had told them that they couldn't make any changes because it was too much paperwork, and they had to live in the foster home for a year, I believe. I, I believe that the social workers who had received the 20 reports concerning Genesis Mata should be held accountable for negligence. I believe, I do understand that when they are overwhelmed, but when it comes to multiple reports going on and on, that is a huge issue and something that shouldn't be tolerated. Another thing I wanted to say is that if the county is underfunded, I've been trying to research if they are underfunded, and I've been having trouble finding records of how much the county is being paid by the state of California and the federal government. So, if they are being underfunded, then we should advocate for more funds and transition from funds that are being used elsewhere that are not being useful, and incorporate that into our youth who are here in our community. This is our community, and everybody here should take a stand for the kids here. Besides what your political views are, these are innocent children. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Alejandro. Welcome.
Thank you for having me here, by the way. My name's Gloria Rodriguez. I too feel like the other grandmother here, that thanks to Genesis Mata, or unfortunately, because of her death, I am here to address an issue, a personal issue of mine. Again, my name's Gloria Rodriguez, and I'm the grandmother of a nine-year-old little girl who luck, you know, she's lucky to be alive right now. She was molested by her biological father. I'm here today because the system that was supposed to protect her failed her. When we reported the abuse, CPS and law enforcement opened a case, but it was never fully investigated, and the perpetrator, her own father, hired a high-powered attorney and walked away without prosecution. He is now living freely, while my granddaughter continues to live with the trauma and pain he caused. She has nightmares, panic attacks. She has nightmares, panic attacks, trust issues, and she's always asking me, why did no one believe her? What am I supposed to tell her? That justice is only for the powerful? I'm urging you, the board members, please, to demand the agency to reopen her case, to review the evidence, to speak to the child again with trauma-informed professionals, and to hold those accountable who allowed the case to be dismissed without proper investigation. We cannot let children be silenced just because the, the accused has money or influence. My granddaughter matters. Every child matters. And if CPS cannot stand for that, then who will? I'm not just asking. I'm demanding justice for my baby, for her and for every child who's been overlooked. Please do the right thing and reopen her case. And we are residents of District Four, so I, I beg you, sir, to maybe overlook and see if that case can be reopened and investigated again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
My name's Frank Madrid, M A D R I D. Come here as a survivor.
Frank Madrid, is that what you said, sir?
Yes, Madrid, M A D R I D.
I think you also said you come here as a survivor. Is that correct, sir?
For sure. Just want to give some insight, you know?
Thank you.
I'm dealing with the things during childhood. So I was born to a 15-year-old mother and a 17-year-old father. So there were, there were kids, had to grow up with them. Things were in that area. We're living in the east side, of course, in, in the trenches, we call them, right? They didn't know how to be parents. So my mom was very angry all the time. My father sided to my mom no matter what, even if she was wrong, 99% of the time. I was abused. I was hit physically. Mentally, I was tortured by my mom. My mom didn't have a good day, I was gonna have a good day, you know? So I, I used to pray every day in the corner of my room. I'd cry every day. I'd cry, I'd cry, I'd cry, say, hey, you know, somebody save me. God, help me. Come down. Let me hear you. You know, anything, just get me out of this mess. I need help. Maybe I have some parents that, maybe these are my parents, you know? Hopefully, my parents get a divorce. So many things going through my head in that time as a child, dealing from six, seven, eight, uh. I was suicidal in elementary due to the abuse. I was, nobody ever asked why. We got a room that was full, now it's empty, that's why. It's a big problem with Kern County, right? A lot of people don't pay attention to the kids for whatever reason that be. Everybody has their own reasons, but I want to reach out to the social workers and DOJ to please help out the kids that are crying in them corners and trying to find a way out and trying to say, hey, I'm right here. Somebody help me, please. Because I did that and nobody ever came to save me. By the grace of God, I was saved. At 18 years old, I hit the oil fields, I started drilling for oil and I never looked back. And I kept drilling for oil. I worked all over the United States. I had the best time of my life. But I worked hard to not go back to that place, to that dark place. I made my own family. I made my own happiness. I'm a very happy father. I'm very, I love my kids to death. You know, I give them what I didn't have. So I want to reach out, like I said, to the social workers, please. And, and of course, our supervisors. Look out for these kids, please, you know? You could find it in your heart, whatever it be, disagreements. There's people out there, young children that need our help. And I'm doing everything with my kids right now, as far as bringing them up right, you know? They're doing great. They're doing great. They're in gangs, they're graduating, they're doing everything that they should be doing. But I have my own issues that I still deal with today, you know? So, so that said, I still find my own demons today. Wish I could have had counseling at the time. But point being, nobody ever, never asked me for help or nobody ever asked me what was wrong in school, at home, family members, nobody ever asked. So I just want to leave it at that, you know? And I hope you guys can understand what I'm trying to get across. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you for sharing. God bless you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Daisy Gomez. I'm a single mother of four girls and I want to just say that I have been, and my children have been, a victim of CPS. And the reason why is because my kids were taken away back in 2023 due to my daughter, my five-year-old, having a scratch on her back, that she got at daycare, of course, because I don't hit my kids. You know, I could yell at them all day, like what other parent doesn't yell at their kids? Go pick up your clothes, go do this, go do that, you know? And CPS came out, took my kids, removed my kids from my home. And they pretty much, you know, fed my daughters a bunch of like, oh, this and that, and you need a drink medication, you need a, you know, you're not okay, you're not well, you know, you're overdoing things that you shouldn't be doing. I had my seven-year-old daughter being given pills that they would call them her happy pills, as she would tell me, and it was Respiron. If you know what Respiron is, Respiron treats schizophrenia, it treats bipolar disorder, and it's, and it treats autism all in one pill. My daughter became suicidal at seven years old. My daughter is now eight. She was told that she was not well, that she was, um, um, she had a lot of aggression and the reason why was because she was removed from my home. She wanted to come back home. She would tell them, my mom is a good mom, she, you know, my mom is the best cook, this and that, and they would not listen, you know? They tried to silence her with a pill and I was forced to give it to her when they came back into my home as a family reunification, family maintenance. They were telling me I had to give it to her. So when I gave it to her, the Respiron, my daughter became a zombie. She was a whole person that was just, I'm talking about, she would just lay out on the couch, very unresponsive. And I feel it's very, um, very, uh, wrong for CPS to go behind my back and give my child a pill or a medication that she is not diagnosed with, the, the reason to be treated. You know, she wasn't diagnosed with bipolar disorder. She wasn't diagnosed with schizophrenia. She's seven. She's a kid. You know what I mean? She wasn't diagnosed with autism. Why does my child need a drink medication when she's not being diagnosed with that? Another thing that I also want to mention is the, 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 back in August 12th of 2023, I had moved into my home. I was living at the Bethany's Shelter off of Truxton. I had contacted and I have the messages and I have pictures, everything. I had contacted my social worker at the time and I had told her, hey, there is COVID at the shelter. I am high-risk pregnancy. I was on permanent bed rest. I said, there is a high risk of, of COVID and I cannot be here. I had found a home and I moved into that home. Well, she came out August 13th, that Monday morning, Tuesday morning, came out with six officers to my home, smiling in my face, telling me, I'm gonna take your kids. Why? Because I was court-ordered to stay at the shelter. I never seen the document. Till this day, I've never seen the document. Well, during that time, she had me arrested. I was took into Kern, uh, Kern Medical. I was released at Kern Medical and when I came back to my home, my kids were gone. Gone for one whole day. I had to have the court CPS worker come and do a thorough inspection of my home just to release me, my kids back into my custody because she did not do her job correctly, the social worker at the time. Now, I am currently facing child stealing charges because of that, that incident, because of that, the false accusation that that CPS worker did. And I'm currently looking at doing two years in prison for stealing my own children. From who? I don't know because they belong fully and solely to me. I have full custody. My case has been closed. But my thing is CPS should not be allowed to go behind the parent's back and have a document signed through the court without me. I wasn't present when they signed that court stating my child needed a drink medication. I found out through my daughter in a visit, telling my mom, I'm drinking medication. What do you mean you're drinking? Like, I didn't even know. I had to find out through my kid at a visit that she was drinking medication and, and I just, you know, I feel the whole case with, you know, with Genesis, you know, that, my daughter was crying. That was my daughter's best friend, by the way. They went to school together. So her telling me, why did her parents hurt her? Why didn't CPS, why didn't, you know, she said the caseworker's name, but you know, I don't know if I'm allowed to, I won't say it.
Please don't.
So she said, why didn't they do anything? They didn't see her, her, you know, her marks, her hair, her this, her that, pointing all this stuff out to me. My eight-year-old daughter asking me questions, I had no answer to. I didn't know what to tell my daughter, why her, her friend was now, no longer going to be allowed to be in the school year with her jumping into third grade, you know? So that's something that I feel that the department really needs to, um, really needs to investigate, is they need to actually, hey, it may be a lot of paperwork, you get paid to do that paperwork. You get paid for that. It doesn't matter how, how much paperwork it is. They need to really investigate the reports that they're getting checked. How many reports are they getting? Back to back? They need to check that. They need to, they need to make sure that the children, especially the ones that are living in hotels, that they're okay. You know, we, everybody struggles. I've struggled. I've lived in a hotel for a month or so because of my struggle, because of work or whatever reason. You know what I mean? Everybody goes through it, but they need to make sure that the children are okay. Why is a child missing school for over a week? Why are they, you know what I mean? Like, they really need to investigate and that's something that I will push for because she didn't have to pass for us to be here, for us to talk about why, you know, CPS, DHS needs to be thoroughly investigated, so.
Thank you so much for your comment. Thank you. Are there any other comments regarding the CPS proposal for an outside investigation? Welcome.
Hi, my name's Josefina Villarreal. I am very, very overwhelmed right now hearing everything. It's not the first time I heard a lot about this, of everybody's stories. I am the one who launched a petition. It has over 5,600 signatures since they launched it, right after Genesis passed away. The petition is demanding an independent investigation on Child Protective Services in Kern County. I am the aunt of Ezekiel Rivera, who died two years ago. He was two years old at the hands of his father as well. He was in his father's care. His father had drugs in the home. We were there at the home and we told police, hey, he has drugs, give us the kids. They refused. The next day, my nephew is dead. After my nephew died, CPS came and took my other nieces and nephews away from me and my sister, who were in a great home. I don't, don't do drugs, nice, clean home, live and sit in the hills. They were very, very, very safe. They took the kids away from us. They put them into a home, which my niece said she was forced to take an ice bath. My nephew that also was taken was in the home when his two-year-old brother died. He was also positive for fentanyl and he survived, thank God. But he went through double trauma, grieving, being a survivor, and then having to be taken away from us. We got the kids back, but they granted the father who killed his son one hour visitation right. I will never understand that. I will never understand why you allow a man who killed their child visitation rights, especially with drugs. What if we go to this visitation and he had fentanyl in his pocket and it's, it's so potent that anybody could smell it and just pass out? The CPS worker is in danger and now my nieces and nephew are in danger as well. I do want to read the petition. I believe I did send it to most of you guys, if not all of you guys. I did send in your guys' emails. But our community has been shaken by the tragic, tragic loss of several innocent lives, reminding us that our systems of child protection are far from foolproof. Too many cases have emerged in Kern County where reported situations of abuse were allowed to persist, persist unchecked, ultimately leading to the deaths of children who were failed by the very institutions meant to protect them. These tragic events have deeply impacted me and many others in Bakersfield area who believe in safeguarding our children's welfare as a top priority. Each instance where Kern County CPS was notified about an abusive or dangerous household, yet the child remained in harm's way, signals a grievous breakdown in their duty. This is not just a pattern, pattern of oversight, it's a pattern of failure that demands immediate rectification. A thorough and independent investigation in Kern County CPS is essential to identify the gaps and the procedures and accountability. Our aim is to prevent future tragedies by ensuring every report is diligently and competently handled. It's not simply about assigning blame, it's about preventing future heartbreak and instilling trust in the system designed to protect our children. According to the data from National Child Abuse and Neglect Data Systems, effective interventions can significantly reduce the occurrence of child fatalities related to neglect or maltreatment. Here in Kern County, it's crucial to investigate whether the existing protocols are being followed and whether they are sufficient. We propose that an independent body be appointed, conduct this, be appointed to conduct this investigation. This body should be fully transparent with no ties to the current CPS structure to prevent any conflict of interest. It should provide recommendations based on their findings to improve policies and procedures. Too many lives have been lost already. We cannot in good conscience stand by these failures as they continue. The children of Kern County deserve better and it is our collective responsibility to ensure their safety. Let us act now, raise our voices for those who cannot. I do want to thank you guys for bringing this on the agenda. I do want to thank everybody that showed up here. It's not easy to tell a story. On top of losing my nephew and what's going on with Genesis, my husband was killed by Bakersfield Police in 2016. So I know it's hard to tell a story. I've done it plenty of times, unfortunately, you know? We do need the department to be fully funded so that cases like Genesis don't slip through the cracks. The community is here in the chambers and ready to help support our kids. We need accountability and that starts with you guys. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time. Can I ask how many speakers we have remaining? Okay, thank you so much. Please come down. We want to hear from you. Thank you for your patience. I know it's been a long morning.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we hear the next speaker, I just wanted to share with everybody here, I just saw one person leave. I don't know if anybody else is planning on leaving, but there's a gentleman in the back here with his hand up. If you would like to meet and talk about some of these issues some more in person, if you want to give him your info, I'd be happy to sit down with any of you at a, at a future time and, and discuss further.
Thank you so much Supervisor. I just saw you punched in, forgive me. Supervisor Flores, did you want to say something now or?
I'll wait.
Okay, we'll come right back to you. Welcome, ma'am.
Hello. Say good afternoon. My name is Araseli Patino, A R A S E L I P A T I N O. And I'm here because I want to, I want to share my story and as well, a family member as well. Back in December 25th, on Christmas Day 2020, my daughter suffered an accident. She was a year old, a year and three months old. And we were in the kitchen. We were staying with my sister at the time, so her kitchen floor, it's hard concrete. My daughter fell and hit the top of her head, the soft spot. We called the ambulance right away when it happened because she hit her head and a minute after, her eyes rolled back. So as soon as we seen that, when I picked her up, when she fell and I picked her up, the first thing I, I checked was to see if she was bleeding or something was wrong with her, but then I seen her eyes roll, roll back and that's when I called an ambulance. I had every proof to show that my daughter had suffered an accident and an injury on her head. Three days prior to the accident, my daughter had, she had just gotten her shots, her weight, everything. My daughter was such a healthy baby. Um, her weight, everything. Um, my daughter was such a healthy baby. Um, after her accident, she was flown, uh she, we, they, the ambulance took her to Camp C. Um, my daughter was not responding. She was turning purple. And um, when, six hours, I'm sorry, six hours after um my daughter was hospitalized, they had to fly her to Madera Hospital. They did give me the option to go to Madera or LA and for some reason I just said Madera. My daughter was flown over there and um we had to drive. Um, me and my husband had to drive. And um, when I got there, since it was COVID, it was during COVID, only one parent was allowed to be in the room. When we went inside the room, I decided to go in first. She was gonna go into surgery and I spoke to doctor, the doctor that was gonna do the surgery. And my daughter was immediately rushed into um, into surgery. Um, uh, everything went good. They just didn't know how she was gonna be after. Um, healthy baby. I am a mother of five and she was my baby. I had three teenagers at the time and I had a four-year-old and again, she was a year and three months. Three days in the hospital, me and my husband were taking turns. We would, we did not leave her side. We would take turns. He would stay in the hotel and then my, my four-year-old daughter was crying because she wanted to be with us. And um, while we were taking turns, um I went to the hotel to spend time with my four-year-old. When I get a call from my husband saying that the detectives and a CPS worker was there to talk to us. I didn't have no fear. I went in because obviously it was, it was an accident. So when I got there, they told me to bring my four-year-old daughter with me. And this was three days after my daughter's accident. It was before an MRI. We were actually expecting, um by then it was December twenty-eight, we were actually waiting for the MRI results. So when I showed up, um, they wanted to speak to me and by myself, they had already taken my, my husband's um or they have already spoken to my hu- spoken to my husband. So when I was, I was talking to them, I was telling them what happened. Thank you. Um, after a lot of questions that were asked and I did provided the witness because I have my eight-year-old daughter that, I mean niece, I'm sorry, my eight-year-old niece there. She seen the whole accident, my four-year-old daughter as well. They were my witnesses. Uh, the detective and the CPS worker started um attacking me and they started um forcing me. Um, they tried to force me to say that it was uh baby shaking syndrome that I had shook in my daughter when it was clearly an accident. When my daughter wa- was rushing to the hospital, I remember I was recording my daughter asking family members for prayer. I did post this video on Facebook and I was asking everyone, all my family members for prayers. There was no signs of abuse, no signs other. My daughter wa- didn't have anything. She's very light complected. It was, she was just in there for the, the accident that happened, the injury on, on her head, on top of her head. Even the doctor that um opened up her um, her head and her, did the surgery, she clearly told me it was an accident and an injury, like an impact here. Um, they were, they started blaming me of baby shaking syndrome and she, they were telling me and forcing me to say that this is what happened and that was not what happened. I did let them know that if um if, i- i- I did feel like it was my fault because I wasn't fast enough to catch her when she fell. And that's not what they wanted to hear. They wanted to hear a different story. It went on for a year and three months. I got my teenagers back in April, four months after, but my two little daughters, they did not want to return them. Um, we kept going to courts and CPS would only report what benefit them. They would, I had videos, I have every proof showing that it was an accident. They were not listening. They were not taking these reports and presenting them to the judge. There is a lot of steps on it and I understand now. I didn't understand at the time. I couldn't I, even though I was going through this process, I was still trying to understand and telling my husband, let's come down, we're not bad parents. Sometimes us good parents have to pay for the mistakes of other parents or monsters that are out there. So even though we were going through all this process, we were trying to understand why were they attacking us? Why were they not bringing um the evidence up? We did had an attorney. I actually took my whole case and I fought and I gave it to my attorney to present them to the court, but the judge did not want it to hear. Actually, sometimes the judges don't even look at the cases. Um, when we decided to take it to trial, I was able to prove and show my evidence and my case was dismissed and I got my kids back. Um, and now, this was a year and three months afterwards. And right now I have a cousin with mental um health issues. Uh, she's forty years old and uh, we got back with her boyfriend, which they have a history of domestic violence. And they are, there is an open case right now. Grandparents are fighting for custody and that, th- there's two children that are actually in danger right now, but one is still placed with the grandparents and the other one is in the hands of my cousin and her abuser. And I know, and I fear that um something is gonna happen to this child and I don't want to wade into it too late. Genesis has brought up so, brought up, and I feel she's an angel and unfortunately she had to lose her life for other kids as well to be heard or be safe and um I'm pleading for the CPS to please look into the reports, report every detail, everything. When we call and re- try to report something, sometimes they don't even want to take our calls. Or when we tell them this is happening, they, they don't, they don't want to hear our story. I think every call should be answered. Every report, every, every report should be taken seriously as if they're, they're children or their family members because honestly, we're not being heard. Um, they keep closing these cases and they have not even checked her mental history and how she had a five-year restraining order against him. And on January, when she started receiving aid, she took off the restraining order and moved in with him. And I am pleading CPS, please, to um, look into this case before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Hi, Nadine.
Hi. Nadine Escalante, N A D I N E, E S C A L A N T E. I want to thank Supervisor Flores and Supervisor Perez for your attention to this matter when I brought it to you guys' attention after what happened with Genesis Mata. I know we are all here because of what has happened to this child. I am a product of Kern County CPS system. Me and my sister were taken away from our biological mother when I was three years old and then physically, we were both physically and sexually abused in the child, in the CPS system here in Kern County. It broke my heart to hear the stories of the people behind me. I had to get up and leave for a moment to get myself together. Forty years and no changes to CPS. This is scary. When I'm hearing the same kind of stories that have happened in my own life of CPS workers not listening to the, the child complaining of abuse. I complained to my own CPS worker of me being abused in the first foster home they put us in. My mother did not physically abuse us. We were taken away because of domestic violence, because my father was the abuser. To this day, I have nothing to do with my father because of this. CPS has to listen to the children. Our children are innocent victims in these situations and we are neglecting their voices. Years ago, I had custody of my nephew and he was physically abused by his father. CPS came, I made several calls to CPS. CPS came out with the intent to take my nephew away from me because I was calling for his safety. Only by the grace of God, my faith in God and the fact that I had filed for um custody of my nephew and received it, I had legal guardianship of him. You guys did not take him from my home. Because I'm an advocate in this community, you listened and you realized his father was abusive. His father admitted it, but he found help and he changed. This is what's happening in our CPS system. Our children's voices are being neglected. When we have children as young as four years old, eight years old, twelve years old, and nobody's not listening, that creates a problem. So in order for change to be made, we ask for CPS to start talking to the children. Start listening to what the children are telling you. Start investigating these homes. Even when they're in foster care, go out to these homes on a regular basis and start checking on them. Don't make appointments. Don't tell them when you're coming. Pop up and visit. That's what I do on my nephew to make sure that he's safe now when he's with his mother. He knows he is my priority no matter where he is. When it comes to change, it is the responsibility of every one of us. Just as we talked about earlier this, today in the truth forum, none of us can be silent. This is why I'm here today, is because it is my duty, because of the experiences I've had in this system, to come and speak up on behalf of Genesis Mata. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadine. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you all for being here and thank you for your patience. I'm really sorry that you had to wait so long. Thank you so much. Thank you for this proposed solutions. Thank you for sharing your heart. Uh, and thank you to the team here for listening. I saw you taking notes. I see your heart is open and that you are listening. And I, I know the profound, complicated job that you have. I appreciate that you're willing to do it. Thank you for listening today. Supervisor Flores?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, for guiding us through this um, meeting, this long meeting, this important meeting. Uh, this sobering and somber day. I want to thank those that have come out on the CPS item to, that shared their personal testimonies. You came with courage and conviction and passion and pain. Uh, I felt that. Um, I don't, I, I, I did not feel your loss personally, but we heard you loud and clear. I can't imagine uh what you've gone through, but uh we stand together, united and I, and I take those concerns, I take those comments full, wholeheartedly and that we will listen. Uh, I support this external review. I support incorporating the best practices, hearing what the national experts have to say. Uh, looking at our protocols, looking at our budget, looking at our staffing, all the recommendations, uh we will look through with a fine-tooth comb. Even if it's, whatever we embrace, if, if it just gives us that much more power, that's, that much more possibility to reduce and eradicate child abuse in our county, we totally welcome that and we will leave no stone unturned. I want to thank uh Lido and your staff for the incredibly difficult job you have throughout the year, throughout the decades. We heard just a snapshot of the complexity of what's happening in families, what's happening in hotel rooms, what's happening with law enforcement, what's happening in the courts. This is a very complicated and unfortunate matter because child's lives are at stake. I heard so much today uh about who's an advocate for children. There isn't an advocate, it's called CASA. Coin-appointed special advocates that they're there for the children's rights to look out for them in addition to the, to the attorneys. But uh, our uh pursuit of justice for just, for um Genesis will be our guiding charge. Our pursuit of justice for those that have been hurt will be our guiding charge as well. Uh, to eradicate this, to diminish this, to do everything we can. We talk about public safety. Often in this chamber, it's public safety, sheriff, probation, DA, public sa- but public safety matters for the most vulnerable among us, which is our children. Uh, someone said that it's oftentimes voiceless. Uh, we need to give them a voice and we will do that and I, I stand uh totally committed. Uh, the act that was committed was of such barbarity that uh it just shocks, it shocks the conscious, it shocks humanity. And uh, we will pursue justice uh at the judicial level, the criminal level and what we control here, the administrative level, which means budget, which means staffing, which means processes, protocols. And I know that sounds kind of bureaucratic, but those bureaucratic processes, uh if we can improve them, will save lives and hopefully avoid this kind of pain and bring justice uh to those that are abused, th- th- those that that need a, a fighting chance uh to survive. And so again, thank you for everything. Uh, it was very sobering and sad. But let's turn that sadness into action and let's attack this problem with everything we have, with every uh ounce of our bone marrow, our, our brain power, our budget, everything that the county can bear on this, we will bear on this.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. Did you make a motion to?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion. I forgot to make a motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores.
I heard, uh, well, let me ask, I, I couldn't have done what you all did today, so I appreciate you being here and, and what you did. I heard from Ms. Rodriguez who said she was in the fourth district, so I want to ask her about that case and also from, from Daisy Gomez. Can you assure us that you will look at those cases? I know you can't tell us the details. But could you just look at them and get back with, report back to us that you've done what, as much as you can do?
Supervisor Couch to the chair, we'll absolutely look at that. I will need their contact information, so if you wouldn't mind.
About to say that. Yeah, before you, before you all leave, could you make sure that you get your contact info to, to the folks here? I wanna, obviously, it's not a, it's not a perfect system, but there are very good people that work at CPS and I don't want to paint them with a broad brush. I will say this, I trust that guy right there, Mr. Marillo. And he obviously trusts those people. Um, and so I have to have confidence that they're gonna get to the bottom of this. I wanna, I want to talk a little bit about, uh, so I'll make a, I'll make, I'll second your motion, first of all, to, to move forward. I want to ask a little bit about the case that brought us here today and that is in an effort to be open and transparent in what we're doing, I know there are all kinds of laws and confidentiality requirements. But what can you tell, what, what can we, what can we know, what can't we know about the case that brought us here today? Not very much, I think.
Supervisor Couch to the chair, I'll defer to counsel for guidance.
Well, let me, let me ask, ask it this way. Well, let me ask this also. The, the, the people or the contractor you want to go take a look at, bringing in to take a look at the department and the operations and everything. Can they look at specific cases? Will they be allowed to do that?
Supervisor Couch to the chair, yes, they will be able to look at specific cases.
Be able to see the entire files on, on these cases.
Absolutely. And, and I think it's a matter of practice that they'll probably do so because of where we are today. My assistant director, Maria Bermidas, wants to.
Sure.
In speaking with counsel, um, what we've done in years past, they'll, it will, it will require a court order from our juvenile justice court in order for them to do that review. That's why they're allowed to, um, they'll be able to review those files, but it will require a court order.
Well, that kind of leads into another question I had and that was, well, this is, this is the way I understand it, so tell me if I, if I understand it correctly. We can't really talk about any case that's in your, it's in under, in CPS. Can't talk about the child, can't talk about the parents, can't talk about the, any of the investigation. We can't even, we can't, not only can we not talk about it, we can't know about it.
Correct.
Is there a way that we, that, that you can be more transparent? And I'm not saying, I'm not trying to say you're not being transparent. You're being as transparent as the law allows you. Can you ask either parents that are involved in a case or the participants, the, the people that are being investigated in the case, if they can waive their right to that confidentiality?
My understanding is, it's also protecting the child's rights. So, there's a child, a child will be appointed an attorney, so it's more than just the parents or relatives. We have to take in to account the child's rights to privacy and confidentiality laws, but I'll pass this on to counsel.
So I'm interested in us asking either the people that are involved in the case or a judge to, to make as much information as public as possible. I don't even know if that's doable or, or legal, but.
Supervisor Couch, I completely understand your question. Again, I'll defer to counsel because.
Supervisor Couch, through the chair. Um, I have with me Jennifer Feige. She has spent the last sixteen years. Actually, I say not the last sixteen years, but sixteen years of her career and a couple of um years over in our advisory section. But the sixteen years she spent in juvenile dependency and she is an expert in that area. So I'm gonna defer over to her to answer some of your specific questions.
Okay, thanks.
Good morning. Supervisor Couch through the chair. This is a pretty complicated area of the law. Eight twenty-seven of the Welfare Institutions Code precludes the department from giving you any additional information at this point. Absent a court order, that would require that the juvenile court look at the information. It's also some- It's also somewhat complicated by the fact that because this is a case regarding a deceased child, 1080, 10850.4 also allows the district attorney to essentially embargo information that's related to their criminal case.
Sure.
Anything that they've told us could potentially create issues for their criminal case. And I've been in conversations with the district attorney, as has the department, and they have essentially said at this point, we are very limited in what we can provide. The information that we can provide, I believe has already been provided to the media and released publicly.
Well, I don't want us to compromise anything obviously, but upon completion of the criminal case, I suppose there could be appeals.
Yes.
So you've got to, you've got to, you've got to work through the entire legal process and I don't even know where that ends. But I would just like our, our position to be that we would like to be as transparent about what took place here as possible and pursue whatever means there are to do that. And if we are legally unable to do that, that's one thing, but at least we can ask the question.
I, I believe that the, the process that's being contemplated today with this item would allow, with a juvenile court order, would allow the reviewers to examine all of the documents in the case. We would have to consult with the district attorney as it relates to this specific case, but in doing case reviews, in the prior 2006 review, we did get a court order. I've already been in consultation with the juvenile court and they've essentially indicated they would be willing to entertain it this time as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your excellent questions Supervisor Couch. Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I just want to say first, with Director Murillo and, excuse me, your team, I have great respect for you and what you guys do. You, you guys have a very difficult job. It's, it touches on criminal, judicial, you know, child welfare, mental welfare. I mean, so many different facets of these cases that are extremely complicated and, and, you know, way above what, what I'm an expert in. But that being said, I think you guys do a great job. You, you do the best, best you can, but you can't be perfect in these situations. I, I understand that unfortunately. There's, you know, being too heavy-handed, you know, you risk, you know, infringing on parents' rights and, and crossing some boundaries there, but if you have too light a touch, there's, you know, situations where abuse that might have been caught might, might not get noticed. So it's a, it's a very fine line, a very, very delicate balance and I respect that. But that being said, I think that there's always room for improvement, another set of eyes to, to take a look at something. So I would be fully in favor of, of this as well and support Supervisor Flores' motion. And I would just like to ask again if any of you would like to talk, you know, as I said, I'm by no means an expert in this, but I would love to hear from you and talk some more. I know Dr. Ma, you had mentioned a program that I'm not familiar with, but I'd be definitely happy to learn more about. So again, if any of you would, would like to meet and would like to share your information with Zelis Williams back there who works in my office, I'd be happy to set something up.
Thank you so much Supervisor Peters. Supervisor Parlier?
Thank you Madam Chair. Parents are given the charge to feed, clothe and love their children. And when they fail to do that, the safety net for the child falls to us. And Lito, I had you in my office, we had a really good talk. I could see the, the strain on your face regarding this issue. But we want to make sure there isn't gaps in that safety net. So I support and I, I actually asked for this too, that we go out and have outside eyes on this. To be transparent and open to books. I mean, good, bad or ugly, we need to take a look at it and, and figure it out from there. Now to your staff that are out there right now, that are working, trying to do a good job, we support them. And we encourage them to continue their good work in our, in our community and encourage your department, keep their heads up. We're going to take a full look at this, but we still have a job to do in the meantime. So thank you.
Thank you to my colleagues, very well stated. And I want to thank you families for coming out here, burying your soul here. It's painful to listen to, I can't imagine experiencing it. God bless you for being here. You have advocated for your families in a very effective way. You see the response from my colleagues and the, and the responsiveness of the, of Department of Human Services. And so this is progress, this is very good. Thank you for being here, it has not been in vain. The life of Genesis, the precious beloved child, is not in vain. And we thank you for being here, thank you Department of Human Services, thank you to my colleagues for this excellent direction for the county family. Thank you. We have a motion, a second, please cast your votes gentlemen.
The motion is approved, all ayes?
Thank you and we're going to head to closed session for one hour and we'll be back at two.